Good evening, everyone. The first thing that I'm going to do is we did have a special meeting that started at 6 o'clock for the council, and I'm going to adjourn that special meeting. And I'm going to convene the Ojai City Council and Ojai Redevelopment Agency, Successor Agency Regular Meeting for December 10, 2013. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Strobel?
Present.
Mayor Blatz?
Here. And if I could ask Mayor Protem Strobel to lead us in the pledge.
May I lead, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see so many people here this evening, particularly from the Arts Commission. One of the nice things we get to do from time to time is to give out presentations. And tonight, we're going to give out the recognition for the 2013 Historic Preservation Award. And that recipient this year is someone who has been in town for a number of years, Brett Bradigan. Brett, if you'd like to come up here, please. Pull up to the podium. Nice to see you, Brett. I'm just going to give a little bit of a historic background on you.
A little.
But I promise I won't be telling all. Since moving to Ojai 13 years ago, Brett Bradigan has served for six years on the board of the Ojai Valley Museum. As publisher of the Ojai Quarterly, Brett has encouraged his team of writers to explore many people and events in Ojai history. As publisher of Ojai Quarterly and Ojai Monthly Magazine, his goal is to hold up a mirror to reflect our past, present, and future. By doing so, Brett and his team hope that this generation and generations to come will be anchored in an appreciation of this unique and treasured town. As Brett says, quote, "You can't know where you're going if you don't know where you've been," end quote. There's hardly any tour words to be spoken. And I do have an award plaque for you, Brett. And it's from the City of Ojai presents the 2013 Preservation Award to Brett Bradigan for significant and outstanding contribution to preserve, to the preservation of Ojai's culture, historical, and architectural heritage. So I'd like you to come up and get this. And then if you'd like to say a few words, we'd appreciate it. Congratulations.
I'll just say a very few words. For one, this should say, "Ojai Quarterly" and not Brett Bradigan. I'm just fortunate enough to work with some very talented people, one of whom --
I can't hear you, Brett.
I think the mic -- I'm too tall. Let me do the wide stance. It should say, "Ojai Quarterly," because it's just through the good fortune to work with such talented group of people that this award is being accepted. And thank you to the council, and thank you especially to the Historic Preservation Committee, all of whom I've worked with in one capacity or another over the past, and whom I admire and respect very much. And we also have our very talented writer, Mark Lewis, here, who has done much to advance the cause of preserving Ojai's history with his great narrative storytelling and his deep research. And it's just wonderful what he's been able to do. And I just feel great to be able to publish his work. So thank you, council. Thank you, committee. Thank you, Mark, and all the rest of the Ojai contributors. I'll accept on your behalf.
Thank you, Brett. You're welcome. If there's anyone from the Historic Preservation Commission, if they'd like to say anything, it'd be -- Hi, Rose.
I'm Rose Chavez Boggs, born in Ojai. And many new people that come to Ojai, as Brett did 13 years ago, they love the charm, and then they try to change it by building walls or fencing it in. Brett didn't do that. He embraced Ojai. And I'm just really thrilled that he's done such a great job of preserving our heritage. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Anyone else? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Brett. Congratulations. The next item on our agenda is public communications, and I do have some speakers' cards. The first public communication card I have is from Deborah Pendry. Deborah?
Thank you, Mayor Blatz. Councilmembers, here representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And we just wanted to, not just, we wanted to remind the community that we'll be having our, oh, boy, don't quote me, sixth annual e-waste and recycling collection event on Saturday, January 11, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And this is an annual event that we do at the Ojai Community Bank parking lot. And we're taking electronics of all kinds, all sizes and shapes. We also take small appliances. Anything with a cord that fits on a counter, you can bring it and recycle it. And that's what we want to do. When we get our new gadgets at the holidays, we do not want to put any of that into the trash can. It's not only uncool, it's actually illegal. So bring it to the e-waste event. We'll also be taking household batteries, old holiday lights, media, CDs, DVDs, VHS tapes, cassette tapes, all of those types of things. We have found a source in L.A. that we ship them to, and they get shredded and repurposed. We will also be taking handheld electronics, ink and toner cartridges. Those are actually a little bit of a fundraiser for us to pay for the shipping to Los Angeles. And then if you can't make that, we all, we take all of those items, most of them anyways, not the electronics, all year round at our Resource Center. And you can always get information about that at OjaiValleyGreenCoalition.org. Thank you.
Date again, Deborah?
Saturday, January 11. So we fill a semi truck to capacity and then some every year. It's absolutely, you know, it's good and bad. I'm not sure how to feel about that, but we get about 300 cars. Ojai Community Bank.
Thank you, Deborah. Linda Livingston?
Hi, Linda Livingston, Ojai. I'm here to speak to you about the dangers of fracking and present you with a petition with over 400 signatures calling for a ban, which I've already handed over. I'd also like you to pass a measure opposing fracking and send it to both Governor Brown and the County Board of Supervisors. Fracking disrupts and threatens wildlands. It contaminates drinking water. It interferes with migration and reproduction. Farmers have reported illness and death to animals exposed to fracking water. It pollutes there with all sorts of scary stuff, not the least of which is methane, a greenhouse gas that traps 25 times more heat than carbon dioxide. There's a link to increased earthquakes, and we don't even know all of the dangers because loopholes in the federal law allow them to protect their 600-plus chemicals that they use. In addition to the methane, it leaves behind radioactive waste, radon, smog, and contaminated drinking water. And if that weren't enough, it uses enormous amounts of water, 2 to 8 million gallons for each job. The industry works hard to confuse us. It recently came to light in 2011. A company paid off a Pennsylvania family $750,000 after they became ill living next to a fracking site. Along with the $750,000 was a gag order placed on them and their children, ages seven and 10, that they could not, in their lifetime, divulge what it was like living near a fracking site. In Fort Worth, Texas, the EPA issued an emergency order after a man complained of his water bubbling. A year later, the order was rescinded after the agency was threatened by the oil company. And now that man pays $1,000 a month for fresh drinking water. There are dozens of stories like this. The industry uses government influence, the legal system, and advertising. And they've even hired military specialists in psychological warfare to deal with the insurgency, aka us. There are currently petitions in, such as this one, in 15 California counties and cities. There have also been resolutions passed calling for a ban in Berkeley, Carson, Culver City, Fairfax, L.A. Community College District, Mar Vista, Marin County, the Ramparts Neighborhood, and Santa Cruz. Again, I'm asking you to bring forth a measure banning fracking and also forward it to Governor Brown and the county supervisors. I've also handed over some notes with, like, fact sheets to give to all of you, as well as the petition.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
The next speaker card that I have is Dennis Leary.
Good evening. I think this is probably the last meeting of the year, since I don't think you're going to meet on Christmas Eve. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you personally for making my life better, I think, providing for public safety and welfare. Also, I'd like to thank your associates, your staff, council, city clerk, commissions, and all the way down the line, to lots of people that we never hear of. We're all dependent on good government, safety, welfare, all these things. If it weren't for you, sometimes you're doing a, it's a thankless job, I realize, but if it weren't for you, we'd have a lot poorer life. And I'd like to thank also myself. I turned 74 today, my 74th birthday. And as the poet says, "How I made it this far, nobody knows; or how I survived so many blows." And you know, a lot of us know how I feel that way, at times, anyway. And the poet also says, "We struggle and we scrape." That's that old-timer's disease you get when you get 74. All boxed in, nowhere to escape. And a lot of us in our society today feel that way. I have an escape. One of them is to come here, believe it or not. I escape from my normal life. I have to exert myself a little bit. I have to put up with my own internal dialogue, which is, "What do you think you're doing?" It's much easier not to come here and make a fool out of myself sometimes. But that's the price we pay for living in a democracy. Free speech is one of our most precious values. So I escape. I come here and get my three minutes' worth, and it usually really goes nice. I mean, you treat us with respect, even though sometimes I'm sure you are in deep disagreement with the ideas presented. So I'm going to escape to another meeting tonight, so I'm not going to stick around very long. But I did want to close the year with a good feeling for myself and for everybody here in Ojai. So I'll see you next year, if all goes well. In the meantime, let's all of us really do our best to take care of Ojai, because there's a lot of people out there. They won't come here, but they're dependent on what's done here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. I appreciate your comments, as I'm sure other members of the council do. Mayor Protem Strobel, did you have something you wanted?
I was just going to say happy birthday to Dennis and to mention that I benefit from the times that he appears and speaks before this council, so I'm also grateful for his participation.
Your comments, Dennis, are always welcome. That's the last speaker's card I have for unscheduled communication. Is anyone else wishing to address us on non-agenda items? If not, I will move on to our commission reports. Are there any chair of commissions? I see one right here that I'm sure has a report from the Arts Commission, so please come forward, Christine.
I do, and I'm short. I have to put this back down.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Blatz and councilmen and women, for allowing this opportunity to give a brief report for the Arts Commission. In your packet tonight, you have two items that concern the Arts Commission. You're going to be looking at the grants that we allocated money toward at our last meeting, and hopefully you'll approve that. Roger Conrad is here, and if you have any specific questions, he's the chair of that committee, and he'll be happy to answer that for you. And also in your packet tonight, you have what we hope is the final reading of the new Public Arts Ordinance. And Susan is here. She told me this is her swan song. And that's the third announcement I want to make, is we do have a vacant seat on the Arts Commission. And for anyone who's interested in applying, there is an application, I believe, online. And also, you can pick up an application from City Council itself. So we're not looking forward to trying to fill Susan's shoes. It's going to be incredibly hard to do, and we're going to have a lot more to say about that at a future date, because Susan has served over 10 years as an arts commissioner, and she is to be applauded for keeping us all, with our noses to the grind, and getting the work done, no matter how tedious or hard it was. Susan always was there, making sure that we got it done. So that's it, unless you have any questions.
Any questions of the chair of the Arts Commission? No?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Once again, we appreciate all the hard work of all our commissions, particularly the Arts Commission. And Susan, you are going to be sorely missed, so we'll address that at a later date, but we are going to miss you for sure. Anybody else from the commissions? Yeah. Mr. Wirick, good evening.
Good evening, the holiday season, Mayor Blatz, members of the council. We had an extensive meeting of the appeals board where we discussed extensively the second unit compliance program on November 13. Our next meeting is January 29. It's something of a feeling about a New Year's resolution, I think, that we hope to be working closely with the Planning Commission, maybe even, there was some talk about possibly having a joint workshop, to really try to nail down how to modify the current second unit compliance program to make it workable, to make it compatible with processing a number of these applications in a short time, get productivity up and do it in a fair and direct and clear, transparent fashion. I have a handout here, which discusses, which is to save time, which just talks about some of the ideas that were at that meeting in terms of moving into more of a clear and transparent way to run the program. But I think that, a couple of points that I wanted to make about where I think the gist of the appeals board is going in terms of a policy recommendation that we'll be making to the council, is to, instead of having a whole bunch of code that then there's exceptions for on the second unit compliance program, we have a very clear minimum standard, and then add clear items to that to make it easy to understand and more tractable. For example, one idea is to have a checklist for minimum standards that a pre-approved list of contractors could have, where homeowner could go, say, pay a fee, get an inspection, you know, just try to move forward faster using ideas like this. But there's some unintended consequences to doing it the way it was set up, is set up now, where you have a lot of code with exceptions. For example, we discovered with discussion, and actually Mayor Protem is the one that pointed this out to us, Strobel, was that the second unit compliance program puts a higher standard of inspection on the principal residence under the non-conforming permit for the second unit compliance than would be the case for the primary residence if they applied for a conforming permit for a second unit. Things like that don't make sense. Buried in there is the possibility that there could be a requirement for everybody to have new windows for energy efficiency standards on an old second unit for, to get the non-conforming permit. So really, in trying to really focus clearly on making it tractable, making it workable, and really understanding and trying to be clear about the difference between conforming and non-conforming, was the gist of our discussion. We hope to really put a lot of effort to this as, like, again, as something of a New Year's resolution in January, try to explore possibilities of fast-tracking with the Planning and Zoning Commission to get something before you as soon as we can in January, to get this program up and running, because we just don't think the way it's configured now, it can be. Thank you.
Are there any questions of Mr. Wirick of the council? No? Thank you very much. That board, because it's just in the initial stages, has been, is a very, very time-consuming, hard-working endeavor, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you very much. The expertise and the things that you're accomplishing are tremendous. So thank you. I, for one, agree with the direction that you just outlined. I think that's the way to go. Any other commissions here to report? No? All right. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. And we have asked for one of the items to be pulled from the consent calendar for further discussion, which is item K. Are there any other items that you wish to have pulled?
I'd like item I, Hermosa Road.
Any other items? Then I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Items 1A through 1M, with the exclusion of items I and items K.
Sumo.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lara?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes. All right. Let's look at item I. Is this something, Mr. Clark, do you have any comment on?
Well, this is the acceptance of an easement on Hermosa Road, but I guess I would ask Councilmember Smith if there's a particular question.
I guess I happen to drive right past that property on my way home. It says that, as part of the development of a private property located adjacent to Hermosa Road, the owner acquired additional easements with the roadway, which is sorely Has the ownership of this property changed? Do we have any project that's going in there, or is this all hypothetical?
The ownership has changed. This is actually property that had been owned by the Ojai Valley Inn. And they recently sold it, and the new owner's planning on building a single-family residence there.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by anyone on the council? All right. Let's take a, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent item I.
Sumo. Second.
Roll call, please.
Lara?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Oh, yes. All right. We also had item K pulled. This was appointments to the City of Ojai Planning Commission. And it was pulled from the consent calendar for further discussion on process and procedures for the appointment of commissioners. And I believe that, Mr. Clark, do you have any comments that you wish to make on this?
Sure. I think I can kick it off. I've had conversations with Councilmember Clapp over a period of time about the process that we use for making appointments. And she's had a desire to bring that forward, but we weren't exactly sure when or how to do that. But that came up today, and so I contacted the mayor, and we chatted about it briefly. And I think we realized that we couldn't make any progress without bringing the whole matter before the city council. So I guess I would say that there's a desire to have discussion about how we go about that process, which would have to be set for a future agenda if the council pleases, and also a desire to hold up on the appointment of these particular vacancies until you've had that discussion. And that's, I would defer to Councilmember Clapp to see if there's anything further.
You pretty much summarized it. Would it be appropriate to say, we have to put it on a future agenda to discuss it. We can't, I can't really discuss what it is that is on my mind about what I think could be improvements. Is that correct?
Well, I think in the context, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think in the context of this recommendation, I think you're free to comment on the process. But I think in terms of taking any action to change your procedures, that would be agendized for a future, a future time the council is so inclined. But if you want to raise the issue, since that's the context of this action tonight, I think that's okay.
Okay. For clarification, and I've felt this way for quite a while, there's a lot of people in the community, number one, that have expressed a desire to have a change in the appointment process. And I, myself, also have some other elements of the process that I've questioned as well. One of the things that disturbs me the most about the current process, and this is nothing disparaging towards the people that have been involved with the process, because this has been the way it's been done for so many years, this has been our protocols, is that the appointment process basically takes place behind closed doors with two council members. The other council members have no opportunity to participate in the interviews. They have no opportunity to express their yea or nay on who they feel would be the best appointment. And so ostensibly, and then it's brought before council as a consent item. The decision has already been made. The person has been notified, or the persons have been notified, that they are going to be appointed, but it has not yet been brought before the whole city council as a consent item. So the person already is under the impression that they've been appointed, and yet the vote hasn't really been made. At that point, as a remaining member of the council, and I was a part of a committee as well when I was mayor, so I've been on both sides of the fence on this, what happens is it comes before in a consent motion, in the consent calendar, and there's sort of this implied that it's going to just be approved, that there's going to be a rubber stamp. And at that point, usually the person's sitting in the audience, they're expecting to be appointed, and any sort of discussion at that point becomes very uncomfortable. So the other council members that have not been part of this process are really put in a very awkward position. They haven't participated in the process, they may not be comfortable with the position that it's the person that's being appointed, or they may be fine with it. But the matter is, is it basically becomes a rubber stamp process without open dialogue. I've learned that in other communities, it's quite common for this to be an open process in a public meeting, where the people that want to apply, apply in a public meeting, and they're interviewed by all the council members. And then at a later meeting, the vote is made, and not at the same meeting, so that there's not any sense of, you know, immediate rejection or whatever if you're not voted in. So there's a separation between the vote and the interviews. That way, it's an open process, the public can see the process, they can see all the people that are applying, they can get a sense of what's going on, and who is going to be appointed and why. This, to me, is a much more democratic way to do it, because right now, we're basically two out of five are appointing the commissioners. The other thing is, it just slipped my mind. Oh, I've also had many people in the community say two other things. One is, why do we have seven people? Why don't we just have five? And I've explored this a little bit as well. A lot of communities have each council member appoint a planning commissioner. That way, that planning commissioner reflects the council member and the constituency that that council member represents. Once somebody's on the planning commission, quite often, they can be on there for 15 or 20 years, and maybe it does, that person, at that point, doesn't really reflect any of the values of any of the council members. So there's a real disconnect a lot of times between the community and what the community desires to be done through their voting and the planning process, because the planning department, something I've learned, is an extremely important body. It has a tremendous amount of impact on what happens in this community, what kind of development we have, in particular, what the development looks like. It's a really, really important body. And I thought a lot about it, and I feel that the idea of each council member appointing someone is not a bad idea, because the council member's elected. So there is, it's implied by the community that they like their judgment, and that I think that to have that follow-through into a planning commissioner is a really good idea. And then if you don't like the council member, they're gone, and the planning commissioner's gone, too. And the other thought is, that a lot of people have brought forward to me, is their concern about the outside-of-the-city-limits appointments. And this is something that gets talked about a lot with our community, because it's only four and a half square miles. Quite often, it's Quite often, it's not that easy to fill a voluntary position. And, and we all really are one valley. And it's really unfortunate our city limits are so small, because everyone feels like they're part of the city. So, I think through the years, this developed that we would have more of a, a broader sweep to get people qualified to come into the position. And also, there was probably a sense of, of wanting to honor that community that we really have as a broad, as, as, as a valley-wide kind of community. So, that's another thing that's been brought before me by many, many constituents, is the concern of the, uh, appointments from people outside of the city limits. Because a lot of what occurs in a planning commission affects the people in the community. They go through a lot of the policies, the planning, uh, pol, uh, building codes. They have a lot to do with building code development. And people have mentioned to me that how can some, why should somebody that's outside of the city limits, that doesn't have to live within these rules, have a say in the rules that affect the people within the community? That's another consideration. I kind of vacillate back and forth on it. I don't really know what the answer to that question is. But I think it's a one worthy of discussion. So, I think I've covered the three things that I think are of importance to me and why I feel that it's important that we really kind of revisit our, our process at this point on how we're, how we're doing our appointments. And that's why I'd like to have further discussion on it.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Clapp. Anybody else have any comments with regard to Councilwoman Clapp's comments?
Are we asking to put this on a fut, a future agenda?
Yes.
Oh, I would, uh, like to see it on a future agenda. Yes.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just one more question. Is this only applied to the planning commission, or does it also apply to any other commissions?
I guess that would be part of the discussion. I guess, yeah.
So, if you're inclined to do that, Mr. Mayor, then I'd direct that the agendized item be broadly enough articulated, the appointments to boards and commissions, so that you could...
All right. So, do we just contin, do we continue this agenda item K? There are people here, there's a couple of, well, there's one comment card that I'll call for public comment on. Uh, but just continue that item and have it agendized as to, to further discuss?
Yes.
The process? Okay. Bill Ryerick, you had a speaker's card. Do you want to have, has this, our discussion here changed things?
No, not on this one. It was, uh, later on.
Oh, it says 1K.
Uh, that's a mistake.
Oh, okay. All right. Oh, I see. You had it down as your commission report. That's why I didn't catch it. But up at the top, it says 1K. So, sorry. Anybody, uh, anybody else that wants to address us on this? With any comments? There's gonna be, yes, Susan. Welcome.
Susan Stinsmula in Amund. Um, I live in the valley. But I was, having served on a commission for quite some time, I think it's really important to get the right people that you need. The seven people together make up different knowledge, have different knowledges. And all of them together become the tool that you need for the city to get advised, uh, in, in an intelligent way. So, I think that the commission, uh, chair, or somebody from the, the commission chair should be somehow involved with the interviews. So that, and if not in person, that they at least advise the interview council people to say, "These are our needs with the absence of these people." That will best, I mean, you don't want to have everybody that's involved in public art, and you have nobody in, in, um, performing arts. I mean, you, you need a balance of all these things. So, that's my only suggestion on that.
All right. Thank you. Just so that you're aware, the, for years, the process was that the mayor and the mayor pro tem would do the interviewing. And, uh, that was it. And then recently, within the last year, I believe, uh, it was decided that it was a good idea to have the chairman, chairperson of each of the commissions also participate in the process. So, that's the way we've been doing it for a year or more, Susan. How that would change when we come down to the actual process, if we decide that we're going to be doing it as a special meeting, where the interview can be done in front of the entire council, whether the chair of that commission can actually sit on the, on that body to do the interviewing or not, I guess we'll have to have a discussion about it. But somehow, I believe that it's very important that the chair be involved in the deliberation process somehow. So, what is the, uh, what, what would the council like to do? Mayor Pro Tem, Strobel?
As far as looking at things that we might discuss, uh, since we're gonna be looking at it with fresh eyes, maybe another thing to consider would be interviews before the full council and the commission that has the vacancy, rather than just the, um, the chairman. That way, we have, uh, even greater input. It would be open in public, and so the, the public could comment.
All right. Well, the public will have plenty of time. Yes. Mr. Eiker?
Scott Eiker with the Ojai Valley Chamber. So, are you going to ratify the appointments? Or are they, these people in limbo until you've had your discussion?
No, no. Tonight, we'll ratify.
No, we're gonna con, we're gonna continue.
We're gonna continue the item.
Oh, we are? We're not gonna ratify the ones?
Well, presumably, presumably if there's enough votes on the council to do that.
I don't, I don't see where a future agenda item to consider the change in the process should, uh, affect the particular, uh, consent item for the ones from tonight. We have not even changed the process. We don't know how it's going to change. We need members on the commission.
So, I, I guess to, to clarify, part of the discussion that we had had to do with the particular candidates that were being recommended for tonight, and whether they should be subject to the different process or subject to the current process.
Well, there's a big line on one of them. Have we identified a third candidate?
We do, there's, uh, item K, there was an addendum to item K to appoint the third candidate. So, you, you have the option of appointing the three candidates tonight. I don't believe there's a planning commission meeting in January before your January 14th meeting. So, you could always defer that question to discuss the process on the January 14th meeting.
Mayor Blatz?
Yes.
If I may comment?
Councilman Laura.
I, I'm just worried about that this process is gonna take quite a while to figure out. I'm not sure. I think we're opening it up right now. We're trying to be more transparent, which I agree with Councilmembers Clapp's stand on why we should look at this process and evaluate it, analyze it more to fit what Ojai needs, and include the commissions and everybody else. But my only concern in doing this is that it's gonna take a long time to finally decide a process. Because interviews done in a meeting, yes, it's nice, but could there be, I mean, I, I could see some people not applying, because they don't want to be in front of the whole council being interviewed for certain commissions. So, there, there are certain concerns that come up to these options. Uh, and that's why my only concern is that it'll take a longer time to vote on the process and keep these commissioners in limbo right now. So, I, I mean, I do agree with Councilmember Smith that it might be a good idea to conduct the new commissioners today and then work on the process.
As the, the, uh, mayor and one who sits on the, the interview panel, which includes myself, the mayor pro tem, and the chairperson of the commission, I don't want to necessarily be so presumptuous that I know better than other council members as to who should be on these commissions. The way that it had worked before was that the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and really, the, the, the chair of the commission would bring forth recommendations to the council. And typically, that would be, as, as Councilwoman Clapp said, rubber stamped. Well, if we're gonna look at this process, I for one, rather than, um, sitting here insisting that appointments go through, for which I was one of the influential people in determining who those appointments might be, would rather step back from that and allow us to have a full discussion if even just one council person has an issue with the process. Now, it could be that our commission is gonna be one commissioner or two commissioners down.
Or three.
You know, there's still gonna be a quorum on that commission. And we just have to move this forward as quickly as we can. But I would, I personally would step back if even one council person, such as Councilwoman Clapp, wanted us to take another look at it. Mayor Pro Tem, Strobel, you've been part of the process. What is your thoughts on it?
Um, I've just recently become aware, really aware, that there is some, um, a desire to discuss the way we do our appointments. And because of that, I would like to see us discuss the process when we can have it agendized. And I would like to hold off on making any appointments until we make sure that we, as a council, are acting as the majority would like us to act on the entire council's behalf.
Councilwoman Smith?
I would like to point out that all commissioners serve at the pleasure of the council. They're a, they are, um, have a term to serve. But if their service during that term shows to be inadequate, if their attendance is atrocious, if they, uh, do not work well with others, I know there has been a case or two, one since I've been in service, where we have asked them to leave the commission. So, even though it's a two-to, or a four-year commission, if that person turns out to be inappropriate or not doing the job, they can be asked to leave. So, that's the other side of it. There are, um, uh, if, if it's an inappropriate person, they can be asked to leave, because they are not an elected official. So, let's not forget that.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Strobel?
One final comment. Um, as long as the commissioner is, is willing, the commissioners whose appointments are expiring can serve until the vacancies are filled. It doesn't mean that they are taken off of the, the board on December the 31st, and there's a vacancy. As long as they're willing, and, uh, that was one of the things I asked Commissioner Amend. I asked if she would be willing to serve until we fill the vacancy. And she said yes. And so, we could do the same with the other vacancies. Ask if they, those commissioners are willing to serve. So, we wouldn't have a, we don't have to have a vacancy.
But I would think we would want to make sure that we expedite the discovery. I'm sorry. I would, I would think we would still want to make sure that this moves quickly, so that we don't, you know, expect them to stay longer, you know, excessively longer.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have to bring up the point that, yeah, we do not usually have an abundance of people volunteering for these non-paid, non-benefited, uh, positions. People do it because they love the city. So, um, we should not in any way think that we are making the process onerous or in any way as, as Council, uh, Laura said, that we are going to make it harder for a person who perhaps is shy about being on TV or whatever to apply, who would be a darn-good commissioner, by making the process too onerous. So, let's not look at it as we have 100 applications for each position. And I think in general, in the last 10 years, we have pretty much gotten darn-good candidates, especially in planning, who had, uh, training or professional landscapers, architects, contractors, all sorts of people who really did have a lot to add to, to the commission, rather than people who just said, "When I first came and started going to meetings..." We literally would have very nice people that would say things like, "Well, I kinda like this project," but could not elucidate as to why they liked this project or what their issues were. So, I would not want anyone to think that the commissioners that we now have are at all inadequate for the job. But I look forward to a discussion on how to change the process. But I do not want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, so to say.
Okay. Any further comments? What do we need? Do we need a motion to continue?
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a, either, uh, I'll entertain a motion to continue this item to the next possible agenda. How soon do you believe you can get it before us?
Your, your next meeting is January 14th, and we can definitely get it to you on the 14th.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to clarify, some clarification. Um, when you say a motion to continue this item, you mean specifically the appointment of the three candidates we recommend? And in addition to that, we're going to ask that it be placed on the agenda for discussion as far as changing our procedure?
Yes. I was ready. I'd be recommended, first is a motion to continue this item to a future date, and leave it to the manager to pick a date. And then, secondly, direct staff to agendize for the 14th a discussion of the appointment process of members of boards and commissions.
Okay.
And you can make that as a combined motion if you so desired.
All right. And then I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Slats?
Yes. All right. Then that item is, that item of our agenda has been continued to the 14th of January. Next item on our agenda is the public, uh, we have public hearing items. Item number two is a resolution adopting the 2014 to 2021 housing element update. Oh, and before we do that, I had one card that came in. Uh, Chair Golden, did you wanna, did you want to make a comment?
No, I think that, uh, Susan would like to say something.
Okay.
But only in regards to the, uh, to the public art.
That's fine, because we didn't pull that item off the consent calendar.
Oh, I see.
So, but, come forward.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for approving, uh, this renovated ordinance. Um, it's been worked on by the public, primarily by the Public Art Committee of the Arts Commission for three years at that. The first ordinance was passed in 2003. And then the public art program happened, started happening. And we started to see how it worked with the city, the process, with developers. And we saw the flaws in the system. And I think this new, uh, code is, really well covers where we are now with the public art in our community. And I think it's gonna do well as we move forward. There will be, so thank you for that. Thank, and thank you for the fine-tuning as well. We do, the public art guidelines will now have to be rewritten as well. So, that's the next task on, as far as making that work. But, but thank you. And I'm, I'm really happy that it's, that it's approved. And the program should succeed better and with logic and with, uh, common sense. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And, and thank you, as well as the other members of the Arts Commission that spent hours
Yeah.
working on this project. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two, resolution adopting the 2014 to 2021 housing element update. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I'd like to make a few comments before I invite Mr. Douglas, our housing consultant, to make the primary presentation. As you know, the housing element update is something that's mandated by state law. And state has recently adopted fairly severe penalties for cities that fail to adopt a housing element on a timely basis. And within the SCAG region, February 12th, I believe it is, is the deadline to have adopted a housing element on a timely basis. As part of the process, we, um, prepare an initial draft of the housing element, um, which went before the planning commission and then before the city council. And that is what was, uh, submitted to HCD for review. Um, and that's something that you did back in September. And in November, we received a comment letter. So, the thrust of, of tonight's meeting, and the meeting that we recently held with the planning commission, is reviewing the comments that were made by HCD on our draft, um, housing element and the proposed responses to those comments. But I did want to point out that there are a number of very important things that were not questioned by HCD. And I think that's really the most significant news that we have tonight. First of all, um, the, the cycle for housing element had a requirement that we allow three-story development by right. And although that was constrained in a number of ways, it was still very controversial. The, um, fifth cycle, which is the one we're reviewing right now, is limited to two stories. And HCD did not comment on that. And HCD did not comment on that. Secondly, there are a number of fairly stringent design review and environmental constraints that we included in our affordable housing overlay zone. And that affordable housing overlay zone was reviewed by HCD as part of their process of reviewing our housing element. And they didn't comment on the requirement that we have design review and then a number of other things: water and sewer availability, acoustical attenuation, stormwater control, biological resource control, archaeological resource protection, historic resource protection, traffic control, view shed protection, and sustainable building construction. So even though we're going to focus our conversation on what they did comment on, I think it's important for everybody to remember that there's a lot of beneficial things in this draft of the housing element that are not being questioned. Secondly, I just wanted to briefly comment on the residential property report requirement. As part of our second unit program in cycle four, we had a housing element requirement that there be a second, that there be a residential property report after the second unit compliance program was over. And we've had a lot of discussion at that at the City Council. And we have proposed that that be dropped. So on page 60 of your housing element, we've put in new language. And rather than saying that we'll have a residential property report, we say the city will work in coordination with other stakeholder agencies to establish programs that promote code and compliance and maintenance of the existing housing stock. And so that's, as a follow-up, we would work with various agencies in the community to make sure that happens. Secondly, in their review of this, the Planning Commission recommended that we establish a period of participation in multiple phases of two years. So if you recall, the second unit program was to be a one-year amnesty originally, and then at the close of it, we would start enforcing our, our requirements as it relates to legal second units. They're actually proposing that it be broadened, and that language is also contained on the, in page 60. So with that said, I think I'll reintroduce Mr. Douglas, our housing consultant, and he will carry on.
Mayor Blatz and council members, good evening. What I would like to focus my remarks on tonight is the comments that we received from HCD and how the Planning Commission and the staff proposed to respond to those comments. Just to reiterate, this is the fifth public meeting that has been held to discuss the housing element, dating back to July, when there was a joint study session of your council and the Planning Commission. And last month, the Planning Commission recommended that your council adopt the housing element that is before you tonight. The letter from HCD is in your staff report packet, and there is a summary of HCD's comments along with a brief summary of how we propose to respond to those comments that's attached to the resolution, the draft resolution that's before you tonight. Some of H-
Page 2-8.
Thank you. Some of those comments from HCD are appropriately responded to simply with clarification and additional technical information, and so I'm not going to belabor those responses. What I would like to do is focus on the few things that address policy issues. And these, I'm going to be talking about issues that are not only addressed in the housing element, but are also in the SPL ordinance that implemented the previous housing element. And so I want to emphasize that by adopting the housing element, you would not be changing the regulations. That would be a subsequent step. You recall with the last housing element, there was a phase one and a phase two. So if it is your pleasure to adopt the housing element that's before you tonight, there would be a subsequent public review process to consider the specific changes to the SPL ordinance. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. So there's four or five policy issues in HCD's comments, and I'd just like to briefly go through those. The first has to do with how state density bonus law applies in the SPL overlay. In essence, every property under state law has to be eligible for density bonus. And so that is clarified in the housing element, that projects within the SPL would be eligible for a density bonus. Under state law, a density bonus up to 35% is allowed when a minimum level of affordability is provided. And so that means that the density would range between 20 units per acre and a maximum of 27 units per acre if the required level of affordability is provided. Another comment that HCD raised had to do with the fact that some of the sites in the SPL are relatively small, and smaller sites are more difficult to develop, particularly for affordable housing. And so the way that many cities have addressed this comment from HCD is to provide an incentive for consolidation of small parcels. So we've suggested in the housing element that the city offer an additional density increase of 5% when two or more parcels are combined so that the total site is at least one acre. And that, that's a, yes.
And if they're not contiguous properties?
They would have to be contiguous.
Okay.
Yes. To, to get a, a larger site so that with economies of scale, it's more feasible to develop affordable housing. Another comment raised by HCD has to do with the affordability and occupancy requirements that are in the current SPL ordinance. The current ordinance requires 15% extremely low, 15% very low, 15% low, 20% moderate, and also between 30 and 50% senior housing for projects that take advantage of the SPL overlay. HCD questioned that in the sense that it could pose a constraint to development because it, it requires a very high level of affordability. So the way that most cities have addressed that requirement is to adopt affordability requirements that are somewhere in the range of 15 to 25%. And so what we're suggesting is a percentage breakdown that has been adopted by other cities that have been certified with their housing element that would require 10% very low, 10% low, and 5% moderate. Now, with that said, it's important to emphasize that where the city controls properties, the city can negotiate for higher levels of affordability through its ownership position. And so these numbers would not be maximums that could be achieved on SPL sites. So as I said, the Planning Commission reviewed these revisions, had a good discussion, and recommended the changes that are before you tonight. Just want to reiterate that these would be policy intentions expressed in the housing element, but they would not go into effect until they came back before you and before the Planning Commission for public hearings in, as proposed amendments to the SPL ordinance. So what we're recommending tonight is that you conduct a public hearing, that you accept the addendum to the previous EIR that was done for the previous housing element and the SPL and those implementation actions, and that you adopt the resolution approving the housing element. Now, in terms of the next steps of this process, I think we're in the fourth quarter of the game right now, but how this plays out is if it's your pleasure to adopt the housing element, we would send it up to HCD. HCD has 90 days to review the adopted housing element and issue their opinion as to whether we have fully responded to all of their concerns in the letter. If so, then we are done. We get a letter back that says we are in compliance or quote-unquote certified. If HCD feels that we have not fully addressed all of their concerns, then they would send us a letter to that effect. And if any of the concerns are technical or clerical in nature, we would ask in the language of your resolution that's proposed, that you authorize the city manager in consultation with the city attorney to make those technical and clerical changes to address HCD's remaining concerns. If HCD raises any policy concerns that are beyond the scope of clerical and technical, then we would come back to your council for additional direction. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the council? No? Thank you. This is a public hearing. I have two speakers' cards on this agenda item. John Fowler. Hi, John.
Mayor Blatz and council, my name is John Fowler, and I'm with People Self-Help Housing. And we want to congratulate you. I wanted to be here tonight on behalf of Ken Duggerel, who's been working with your staff, both Rob and the previous Rob, in trying to help work through some of the housing elements concerns and what's going on with that. So we're thrilled with the process that you've made, and we think that, we wanted to encourage you to, you know, move the housing element forward, forward and adopt it. We were excited to be a part of the process and to meet with staff and talk to them and listen about the concerns that are going on and as far as the height and the density and the, we want it to be, to fit into the character of Ojai and, and those kinds of things. And so we were, we're excited to be a part of that process. And I also wanted to acknowledge Main Street Architects, who worked with us to provide something pro bono for you guys to, to address that, you know, to how can we get the density, stay out of the three levels, the three stories, and still meet the obligations? And we also, also worked in the background, trying to call, and what we did, actually worked with HCD to talk to them and said, as a housing provider, we do believe that there's a serious effort being made by the city of Ojai, that what you're proposing is doable, and that you can provide affordable housing without going to three stories, that, and you can get to the densities. And so I don't know if we had any, any effect in what they had to say, but certainly hearing from somebody who does this, I think, helps them say, well, maybe, maybe that what they're trying to do there is, is achievable and can be done. So to that point, anyhow, I just want to continue to follow your efforts and congratulate you on the efforts that you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And, Matt, I'd like to thank People Self-Help for coming up to Ojai, and we'd spent a whole afternoon with myself and the two Robs, and looked at all the sites, and we got tremendous feedback from them. So very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker's card is from Bill Wyrick.
Thank you. And I'm going to key off Mr. Douglas's comment about the resolution here is how's it do with the housing element, and then step two is the ordinance is implementing that and being consistent with that, and wanting to make sure that we're all clear about the degree of freedoms that we have for dealing with these ordinance changes, giving the housing element stipulations, so that we're not constraining ourselves in a, in a way that we're not aware of. So number one, on the reporting requirement, my understanding is that the statement, substitute statement of promoting co-compliance and maintenance of the existing housing stock, working with other agencies, is in fact compatible with repealing Chapter 16 of Title 10. That's my understanding. I want to make sure that that's clear, you know.
Mayor and members of the council, that exactly was the intent of the language that we put in.
Okay.
So full repeal of that requirement would be appropriate.
Okay.
Second comment, on the two-year sequential moving forward, that has to do with the expiration date, but I think possibly it also ought to consider the cutoff date. My understanding is that the cutoff date of January 1, 2006, for the second unit compliance program, basically was associated with adopting the first housing element cycle. There was really no reason for that other than that. Given that we're moving forward, I would hope that the housing element as submitted allows that change on the cutoff date as well.
Mayor and council members, it does. In fact, that was the intent as well.
Okay. Just being careful, I'm sorry.
Keep us on our toes.
And then the last item I want to, thing is, I, I just, it's a governance issue. In terms of empowering the city manager to make any technical non-policy revisions to the adopted element that may be necessary to obtain final HCD certification, absolutely a good idea for the flexibility. From a governance point of view, that's a real burden to put on the city manager. For him to be making solely the decision of what's policy and non-policy can possibly open the city manager up to some criticism. Might be better to share that judgment with perhaps the, the chair of the City Council, the mayor, just to run by, doesn't cost any more time, kind of broadens the judgment base. I think that might be a, a good change to make.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments on that, whether you think that that's overburdened some, or whether you'd like to have the mayor?
No, typically in a situation like that, I would let the council know what decisions I'm making, and if, if any council member of the five had an objection, we'd put it on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bill. Those are the only two speakers' cards I had on this agenda item. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address us? No? Then I'll bring the public hearing back to the, to the council. Anybody object to closing it? Okay. Public hearing's closed.
Mayor Blatz.
All right. Further discussion?
Mayor Blatz, if I may ask Mr. Douglas a question?
Yes.
About affordability covenant that was raised by the housing community of development. So they said that the way we currently have the provisions, 15 extremely low and 15 very low, 15 low, 20 moderate, and so forth, that could possibly be an impediment to developers, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I do have a question about, on the housing element draft on page 36, where it says the Ojai growth needs. And it, it breaks down what it, where it thinks the RIN number should go, which is 23% very low and extremely low, 15.9% low, moderate, 18.9 low, and so forth. So I'm wondering, could we make an argument to keep, to raise the affordability provision knowing that we need to accommodate this affordable housing, whether it be special needs, disabilities, senior citizens, low-income families, so forth? Because all these groups of people are, are affected, and they, we would want to supply some more affordable housing for these groups of people. Can we make that argument, or is that too far-fetched?
Council member, if I could put on my HCD hat and, and try to explain what I think they mean by this comment, this comment doesn't mean that the percentages that the city established through the SPL are not, are, that the need is not there, that that exceeds the level of need. Instead, what HCD is looking at, they have to walk a fine line between the desire to see affordable housing built, but also to the, the desire not to deter the development of market rate housing. And so I think their key concern is that when the affordability level exceeds a certain point, then it could put a burden, a financial burden, on the production of market rate housing. And so they, apparently through their comment, they felt that the percentage requirements that are in the SPL are above that threshold that could inhibit the production of market rate housing through cost shifting so that the market rate units would be subsidizing the lower income units.
The fact that they, and they, so the high density having to go by state law and including that in our, in the redraft has nothing to do with affordability, has mostly to do with the small, the small, the size of the, the SPL sites, right?
The density, I think, is what you'd consider to be a requirement, and I mean, it's necessary in order to make it feasible to produce affordable housing, but the density in and of itself is not sufficient. There's, as the, the gentleman from People Self-Help, I'm sure, could, could tell us, just, just having that density is not enough. There needs to be financial subsidy that goes into the project as well. And so I think that's the distinction between the density and the affordability requirement.
Yeah. No, and I understand that. I just feel like sometimes they're not focusing on the real need of our community and sacrificing that with the market rate value of what a house is worth. And we're more doing it detrimental to our community than inviting people that have special needs or for housing.
Any other questions? Any votes, have any questions?
I have, it's, it's not specific, but don't go away.
Okay.
I just, I just want to keep mentioning this so that it doesn't get lost in all the work we're trying to accomplish. And that is, although we couldn't use it to apply to our fifth cycle housing element, at some point, we need to start upgrading reports. to our fifth cycle housing element, at some point, we need to start upgrading reports that can show valid constraints to the number of houses that RENA assigns for the city of Ojai. And so, I want to make sure we keep that on the horizon, because even though 2021 sounds like a really long time in the future, we have to ask ourselves, "How long does it take to get a particular study done?" And some things we are on hold about, like with the water. But I think it's important that we keep, that we keep sight of the objective or goal, that we need new reports for our resources. And something else, as we're talking about affordable housing, I just want to remind people that any, any building, any project, any unit can be made affordable if you have some source willing to subsidize the cost of that unit. So, it isn't, I, I do not wish to put the, on us, on a private developer to, to provide for affordable housing. We can, we can do that in a different way. So, I sort of agree with the state that it is a constraint, having the high affordable numbers. But there are ways to work. I also wanted to mention that as far as getting money, if it is federal money involved, and correct me if I'm wrong, if it's federal money involved, then we are not going to be able to limit those persons buying into those units. We can't limit them to city of Ojai residents. I mean, it's wide open. And so, when, when we say we want to provide affordable housing for the citizens of Ojai, you first have to eliminate federal money. The state has pretty much already eliminated its money. So, then we're talking about getting together some active group that would channel money into providing for affordable housing. So, I just want to make people aware that even when we say we want to provide affordable housing for our people here in Ojai, if we use federal money, we cannot limit it.
Is, is that an accurate statement, Mr. Douglas?
It is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Other questions, comments by council? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I will be happy to recommend adopting Resolution Number 13.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, adopting the housing element as revised.
Second.
And I assume in that motion, you're also accepting the addendum to the final EIR?
And prior to that, accept the addendum to the final EIR, adopted for the city of Ojai, '06, 14 housing elements.
Okay, we, do we have another second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion by the council? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number three in our agenda is a time extension for tentative tract map, TTM 07-01, design review permit, DRP 70707, entry permit, T0754, for property located at 408 Bryant Circle. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Mrs. McLaughlin will make this presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
In December of 2008, the city council approved this project for a subdivision for an existing 30,000, just over 30,000 square foot industrial office building on Bryant. And it was a proposal to do 11 industrial airspace condominiums. The project's known as the Ojai Valley Business Park. The proposal involves the conversion of the existing building into these condominium units, and it does not involve any new development or increase in the building size. There was some reworking of a parking lot and things that way that would be needed, but there's no new development proposed as a part of the project. As a part of this application for an extension of time, there is also no changes being proposed from the existing project. Each unit would be able to be sold as an individual ownership unit, and the applicant is requesting at this time for a one-year extension of time to secure financing and to be able to initiate the project. The applicant has noted that the local economic situation has changed since 2008. There, we've had our economic slump and it's seemingly coming forward now that they're ready to go ahead and try to pursue the project. Since there is no change in the project, that the environmental situation is the same and, and everything is ready to proceed, we feel that this extension of time is appropriate. And so, at this point, we're asking the council to recommend this approval and go forward. If there's any questions, I am present and also the applicant for the project is also here.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by the council? Comments by council? All right, this is a public hearing. I do have one speaker card from Stephen Bernstein.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Stephen Bernstein. I'm the managing partner of the property. I'm here to answer any questions that you have regarding the extension.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? No, guess we don't have any.
You're easy. Thank you.
All right. That was the only speaker's card I had for this agenda item. Is there anyone else wishing to address us on it? Okay, I'll bring it back to council then. Close the public hearing unless there's an objection to doing so. Public hearing's closed and I'll entertain a motion.
This is the first application for an extension, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm ready to make a recommendation.
Okay.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 13 dash.
Fifty-three.
Approving a time extension for design review permit, DRP 07-07, tentative tract map, TTM 0 dash, 07-01, and a tree permit, T0, oh, 07-54.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion by the council? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. Moving on to item number four on our agenda, historic landmark property Mills Act agreement for historic landmark number 20. This is the Arbolaata House B located at 715 El Toro Road, assessors parcel number 0200062070. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin will make this presentation as well.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. The city council designated this property as a landmark in August of 2012. A year later, the designation status of this landmark was revised by the city council, and it removed the land and the accessory improvements from the landmark status, and it concentrated only on the building itself as the landmark. The Mills Act agreement application had been put on hold during some of the landmark status review, and so, it has come forward. The Mills Act agreement is to help foster preservation of privately-owned historical properties by facilitating property taxes incentives. The Mills Act would provide the property owner with benefits to maintain and preserve the subject property as a landmark property. The property owners have included a proposal for preservation and rehabilitation and a timeline related to that for the, and it includes the maintenance for this property. On November 14th of 2003, the Historic Preservation Committee voted on a four to three vote recommending denial to the city council for this requested Mills Act agreement. The applicant was not present at that time, but had been present in several meetings prior to that, and there were still some questions and issues that were raised during that hearing. The issues related primarily to the front door and the stucco wall at the front of the house. At the meeting, staff did point out to the landmark committee, the, excuse me, the Historic Preservation Commission, that the landmark status on this property was only for the building and did not include the surrounding properties, fences and things that way. Therefore, the questions that the HPC had with regard to the fence and wall seemed to be out of place with regard to the Mills Act agreement. The issue to the front door, the issue related to the front door entry had been discussed by the HPC at previous meetings. They went out for a further field visit in October to review the site, both inside and outside. And at that time, the, at the meeting, they had concerns and recommended denial based on that front door situation. They felt that the historic review report that was provided for the project had shown a different door, and they felt that this door that was installed was not appropriate for the building. The applicant, since that meeting, staff has had conversations with the applicant and their representatives, and they felt that the door that they installed was more in keeping with the architectural style. They also felt that the door that was shown in the resource report was not an original door to the property and to the George Washington Smith architecture. I think that's the primary issues. At this point, the council will have to consider the recommendation of the HPC. The applicant is representative, is present this evening and can address any questions. If you deem it's appropriate, the resolution is there for the Mills Act and that contract. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address those.
Questions of the council? Yes.
I was glad you brought it up, because reading the motion and the denial on page 4-88, it was a bit confusing, because the, the motion recommends denial of the historic designation, and then it says denied this 14th day of November 13. So, basically, by a vote of four to three, due to what you cite, the HPC did deny them being given the Mills Act.
They didn't, they recommended that the city council deny the Mills Act portion. It is not the landmark status. It's the Mills Act, which is the property tax incentive for having a landmark. And so, I think the council and, and in the future, I hope that the HPC needs to weigh that aspect, that to have incentives for property, properties to become landmark, you want to look at them.
Give them a tax break.
Right. And this, for some reason, it was before my time. I'm not sure why it was split out, but a lot of times, those should come hand in hand. If, if we don't encourage it, a landmark through this process, we may not be able to get such landmarks.
Right. And can you explain to the public what that would mean as far as a tax break for owners who are willing to take on the burden of making sure that a historic property is kept up to, you know, higher standards or to be able to get custom work done?
Mm-hmm.
So, what will that benefit?
They will get a break on their property taxes. I defer to the attorney, if he has more information on it, but there is a tax benefit to them from property tax standpoint. And that is, the hope is that by reducing their taxes, they will have additional money to do the improvements or just to keep the maintenance. The maintenance on a historic home is significantly higher than, say, my home in a tract.
Mr. Fletcher, can we put a percentage of how much they will save on property taxes if it's a Mills Act property?
I don't know. It's a function of, under the Mills Act, it's a function of improvements made of the property. It's a formula. I'm not, I'm not with this particular project whether, whether we could, whether we could cap the benefit, assuming the otherwise are complying with all the terms of both landmarks ordinance and the terms of the Mills Act contract. And it's off, I don't know, I assume, I'll ask Ms. McLaughlin, I assume we don't have an estimate, they haven't provided us with information what the projected loss in tax revenue would be. I've done projects in the past where as part of the staff report, we identify how much the tax, potential tax savings would be, so we know from the city standpoint what the loss in tax revenue would be. But.
Right.
It's calculable, should be capable of being calculated based upon the current improvements of the property, how much they have expended so far.
The applicant's representative may have information. There is on exhibit, attachment B, does the preservation, and there are costs associated with that. And I'd have to go through the agreement to see whether there's any other additional information on that tax amount.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. McLaughlin? Mayor Prost, Strobel?
A little clarification. Did, is HPC content with the issue about the door?
Four of the members voted no to the Mills Act because of the door, so I would say no.
Even, even after, historically, the door that was proposed is a better match?
That was the applicant's opinion.
Okay. And another objection that the HPC had was the wall?
There is a wall that is outside the front setback, I believe, and it's, as you come into the property and you enter through there to go to the front door, and it's a significantly high fence. And there was issue with regard to that and questions around that. However, because of the change in the landmark status designation that had only pertained to the building, that was staff's belief that the fence did not, was not involved, although it does get attached to the house at some point. But there was a connection piece to that fence that it connected to that was separate, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Councilwoman Clapp?
I was at that meeting. It was really an interesting one.
It was.
One of, there was objections, a major objection seemed to be the sincerity. A lot of it was talked about the sincerity of the, of the applicant, the sincerity. And that there seemed to be the kind of going rogue on what they were doing. So, it's quite an extensive conversation. The door was a major concern. And the other one was the wall. And one of the things in like a little fine print thing is that you can't connect anything that isn't original to a Mills Act property. And they're saying, "Well, this wall is post this house and it's been connected to the, to the property, and so therefore..." But one thing, if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, Mills Act has a whole, a much higher standard of what can and cannot be done on one of those homes, once you're in a Mills Act.
Right. A lot of the Mills Acts, you will see that they are very specific as to what is included in the agreement and what has to be maintained. In some cases, it's certain aspects interior. I know the, you can help me, the 1,000.
Foothill?
The Libby House has beams inside, wooden beams, that are painted, and those were specifically called out. There are things also that can be excluded, you know, kitchen remodels and bathrooms tend to be the first things people want to go in and remodel. But in this case, there's nothing on the inside that is a part of the landmark status or the asking for the mills. It's only the.
Nothing on the inside?
See, exterior building.
Only?
Is what is the landmark status at the current time.
So, the Mills Act is only going to be for the exterior?
The landmark is only for the exterior.
The Mills Act is only going to be for the exterior?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you look at these pictures. There's a lot of interior original tile work.
I believe a lot of the tile work is new.
It's new? What about the floors and the fireplace and?
You'll have an opportunity. There's a combination of tile work the applicant is indicating.
Does the house have to meet a certain standard of original integrity in order to be qualified for a Mills Act?
I believe so, yes.
Does this meet that standard?
Based on the only issue being the front door, I believe so.
Just for the exterior? So, the interior is.
Is excluded.
Fair game?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question. Once the property is landmarked, and this property was landmarked by the Historic Preservation Commission.
And the city council, yes.
And the city council. Then that proper, and was that door there when it was landmarked?
The landmark status was originally done in August of, excuse me, August of, August 28th of '12, and then. twenty-eighth of twelve, and then a year later, I believe it was a little bit earlier in August of two thousand thirteen, you did the revision to the landmark status. And I am not sure whether on the August, the early August date, whether, I think the door had been changed by them, but I'm not positive. They had wanted to go back out for the site visit to, because there had been some discussion about the door at earlier meetings.
Well, once the property had been landmarked, then that door couldn't be changed, could it?
That's correct. You'd need review.
And there was no review?
I don't know about where we stood on plans and where things had been reviewed in the detail of what those plans were. We can go back and do some research and come back to you.
Well, I think that that's, you know, my, my persuasion is.
And the applicant is here, they may be able to address that.
Okay. But the thing is, is that it is, it is my preference and my belief that once the property is landmark and restrictions are put on the, what can be done to the exterior of the property, that you can't do anything without having some sort of review.
Correct.
And in consideration of that restriction, you are allowed to have the tax breaks pursuant to the Mills Act. Well, I'm not clear in terms of the Historic Preservation Commission. They've already indicated that the property was landmarked, and as such, it should be eligible for the Mills Act. But I can't see how you can landmark a property and then deny the Mills Act.
There was discussion at the HPC meeting, and Councilmember Clapp may remember this, that they were upset that they had landmarked the property while it was still going on through the remodel process. But if they didn't landmark it at the time, then the remodel could proceed and you could have a situation where they remodeled enough that you wouldn't want to landmark it. So there has to be some weighing of factors. If you put the landmark status on there, excuse me, I agree with you, then we have the opportunity to review those changes that they're doing through the remodel. But I do not know what they had a building permit to do at the time that all these changes occurred.
Okay. Councilwoman Clapp?
And the landmark status was also just the exterior? It was, or was it the interior as well?
In two thousand twelve, when you did the landmark status, I don't know whether, typically, the landmark status was the inside and, I mean, the outside, excuse me. And through the Mills Act, there have been the stipulations on a lot of the interior work. I, I would have to go back and check the record as of two thousand twelve, but when you came back in in two thousand thirteen, they excluded the grounds and were only looking at the exterior of the building.
Okay, I'm confused. So when it goes to the Mills Act, is the interior or is it not the interior included?
It can be through the Mills Act.
Who determines that?
The HPC. I would, when we went out to do the site visit, that was part of what they were looking at.
Another question. Would the, the tax benefit, is that purely just on the value of the house's exterior if it's purely an exterior Mills Act dedication?
I wouldn't be able to address that at this point.
Or is the, or is the tax break for the entire property, which appears to include two other, two other houses on it?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the tax benefits come from improvements made to the property. I would assume, I don't know the detail, I would assume, if, if, if this is a, and it's not uncommon to have a preservation project solely for the exterior of a structure because of some, because of its architectural character as opposed to its interior. There's nothing wrong with that. But normally then the, the improvements that are made or proposed to be made that, that generate the tax benefit would be limited to those elements which are historical. So if the house has no interior historical significance and wasn't recognized for that, it may be that the proposed improvements there wouldn't qualify for the tax benefit.
So you're saying only the improvements is where the tax break is? I thought you got tax break over the property, on the property taxes, straight across the board.
Maybe we should do almost a workshop with you. It's a function of improvements, it's supposed to be incentive to, to continue preserve, long-term preservation of the property.
So you reduce the property taxes?
Yes.
So is it reduced over the entire property?
Yeah, well, yes, because it's taxed.
So their entire property would get the tax break, yet the only, the exterior of this house is going to be Mills Act? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yes, that's correct, because that's all that's, I mean, there's, the tax, property taxes are based upon the value of a property. But I think where your concern may come up, where we may want to, you may want to evaluate this more carefully, is that are the improvements, the investments that are being made that generate the tax savings, are those limited to improvements being made to the historical character of the building?
And I believe that to be the case.
I believe that's supposed to be the case.
It's, it's.
There's a list, you know, there's an attachment in the agreement, the list of proposed improvements.
And, and to help.
The timeline that's in, that's in here.
Clarify a little bit.
Attachment B.
Yeah. Help clarify a little bit, and, and I do think it needs to come back before us with, with more information. But it's not as though you have a Mills, Mills Act property and your current property taxes go down. That's not it. It's you, when you, when you do improvements to property, your taxes go up. And rather than your taxes going up, you get a break on that increase. So if you're going to, if you're going to be redoing the outside of the house, it would cause it to have a higher value on the tax roll, you get a break on the improvement.
Boy, I thought, I thought you actually got a tax break.
I don't think so.
No, and, and what would be the purpose of that? You're, you're restricting improvements and work on the house. You're not, you're not restricting the house as it stands at the time that it's landmarked. So what you get the tax break on is the improvement. And is that your understanding too, Ms. McLaughlin?
I am not sure on that. I would not want to venture on that.
It makes sense if, if improving the outs, exterior, and you have to go and have everything custom done, you can't get anything off the shelf because it has to look like it did in eighteen ninety.
If it's only the exterior, the interior.
That's only the exterior, right. You, you can redo a bathroom inside, and that wouldn't cause an increase in tax, in taxes, but if you added a room.
It would.
It would.
Right.
But that, adding the room won't give you a break, except for the part of the outside that perhaps had to be custom made to match the stucco or something as it was in eighteen ninety. But the actual square footage of the room increase, you would have to pay the extra tax on. That's my understanding, but.
Well, I guess we need some clarification.
I think we're going to want some clarification, but I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear from the applicant. So Ms.
Do you have another question?
It's for the applicant specifically, so.
Hi.
Hi. Good to be here with you all tonight. My name's Erica Gorman, and I'm just going to share some words on behalf of my parents, Kevin and Lisa Clark. Thanks for letting me talk. I'd like to start by giving some background information on my father, an artisan architectural designer, Kevin A. Clark. I feel a proper introduction will help give the appropriate value to his work and perhaps illuminate a different perspective on the changes that he's made and continues to make on the residence. He's been a residential designer for over thirty years, and he's been deemed a master of his craft by many, including the Architectural Digest and the Institute of Classical Architecture, the Los Angeles Chapter. In addition to being featured in AD here, his homes have graced the pages of Malu Magazine, Town and Country, Elle Decor, Veranda, and the Los Angeles Times. He's an exceptional artist, and he really needs no further proof of his merit and command of his profession. I'd like to state further why they'd like to acquire the Mills Act for the estate. Kevin plans to evolve the property over the course of his lifetime. As you have most likely seen from the before and after photos included in the original report, the home has been taken from a state of relative decay to that of an enlivened work of gocable art. Prior to Kevin's work on the home, passersby would not stop to gaze at it. Now, a tour has changed its route to take its clientele past the residence. Its metamorphosis is a palpable and obvious one, and Kevin wishes to continue creating reasons to blossom the immense awe surrounding the home. The Mills Act I see as proper reward for elevating this once embarrassed historical property, which I believe has value to the city of Ojai, and for the monetary and emotional commitment Kevin continues to make to the home and will continue to make throughout his life. One of the next steps he plans to make is to restore the original reflecting pool and fountain in the rear courtyard, a fountain which he discovered as it had been buried by previous owners. This restoration alone will cost over twenty thousand dollars, and as of now, he has invested over two million dollars in the home. It is blatant to see from the current images of the residence and Kevin's dedication to Spanish colonial revival homes in his own body of work, that George Washington Smith is a well-respected idol of Kevin's. It is further evident that with each step of the process of remodeling and reviving Arpalada House B, Kevin has stayed true to the beautiful roots of the home first laid by George Washington Smith himself. He will continue to do this with the estate and land surrounding it when adding period-specific fixtures to the structure and attending to all other details of the property. Although not an exact replica of the original design, there is no question that Kevin has rescued this home. I lost my place. And coaxed a blossoming from it only capable of a fellow artist. You needn't worry that the finished product will not exceed all of your expectations and more and represent this community and George Washington Smith's stamp on it in the greatest of light. So please do reward my father and his incredible artistry and efforts in support of Arpalada House B by approving the Mills Act. He truly is more than deserving, and this way, the city will maintain the gorgeous residence as a landmark and the acclaimed designer who, and owner who breathed life back into the home and who has continually risked financial stability for the greater good of the estate we recognize for his contribution to the community. Thanks for your time, and I look forward to hearing your thoughts, as I'm sure you're all passionate about the fine art of architecture.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Laura, do you have a, do you have a question?
Mayor Blatz, I do, I do appreciate your comments, and I'm sure that your father has put a lot of his work into this building, and he's well-qualified and he's passionate to keep improving the property. My only question is, I, you got to understand that a lot of our commissioners, we really take their recommendations into consideration.
Should.
And, and we, and as they voted forty-three, and it seems like we haven't really gotten an answer if the door was the original door or not. It.
I guess I would say to that, that it's really hard to know. If you look at the photos of the house before the changes were made, you can see that there's a lot of things, a lot of changes that were made from the original structure that have been repaired. And with the door, which has, has been moved to another spot on the property, it's not like it was thrown out, it's, it's still remained a part of the story.
No, that's, that's, I mean, that's, I understand that, but I, it sounds as if we've been deliberated here on the dais that it's, the Mills Acts has specific requirements. And if the exterior is, is being enacted, is being accepted as a Mills Acts agreement, then it should be respected for what it originally was. And I guess that's where I'm, I'm, I'm a little puzzled of how we could find out if that original door should really be in there, or if it's true that your father replaced it with the door that needed to be there.
Well, he did replace the door, yes.
So he, while it was remodeled, or?
While it was, well, the house has been, it's been being remodeled for the, for the last seven years. And so he had always made plans to replace the door, and the artistic integrity of the new drawer as, I can't, sorry, I can't remember. She stated that it has a greater connection to the, the style of the home, and there really was no way to guarantee that that was the original door, having so many changes been made to the house over the course of the last ninety years. So, and I would invite you to see how truly magnificent the new door is, and as I've stated, this really is a marriage between two great artists, and I understand that there are some technicalities that are difficult for, difficult hurdles, that have been difficult hurdles for the historical commission and for you all here to, to, to look past, and I understand that. And I think that that's, you know, a kind of a decision that, that's not mine, that's, that's yours, and I can only give my opinion, and after watching the process from an outside perspective and, and seeing what it's been like for both sides, so, I mean.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mayor Prostam Strobel, do you have a question?
Yes, I'm got, it's been asked several times from different directions. I'm going to ask the same thing again. Is the door in question? Was that door in place at the time it received landmark designation?
No, that was a recent change. There are several bedrooms that are still, there, well, there's one bedroom that is, I'm sorry.
Was it submitted as a proposed change during the landmark designation?
It was not, and I don't think we, I don't think we really thought that that was in need of the permitting process in the same way.
That's my question, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us on this? Mr. Mason, you have any comments? Come forward, please.
David Mason, El Paso Road. I think for some of the problem came in, people on the commission liked the house and liked the improvements that had been done to it. The photographs that were submitted at the time that it was declared a landmark showed the original door in its place without the wall that's been built and attached. And so I think the commission was highly disappointed when it got down to the point that it came back then for a Mills Act, and things had been changed from the time that it was declared a landmark without it having come before the historic commission. I think had they been open and clear about those facts to begin with, it would not have caused as much problems. But some people felt that they had been cheated that were on the commission, and they just weren't going to vote for it. Myself, I think the house looks beautiful, but the early renditions or renderings of the property show what appears to be the door that was there. But anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wishing to address us on this item?
I have another question.
Okay. No one else? Okay, I'll bring the public hearing back to the commission and close the public hearing without hearing an objection. Mayor Prostam Strobel?
I'll address this to City Manager Clark. Has there been any discussion about removing, evoking the landmark status at this property because of the change in the exterior since the landmark status was granted?
I'm not aware of any such discussion.
I have one question. Having been landmarked, would it, would it be a requirement of the owner, if they wanted to change that door, to come back to the city for review of the new door?
I believe so.
Okay, and if, if that was not done, does the city then have the authority to revoke the landmark status of the property?
I believe that's one of the remedies the city has, although I'd have to look more closely at the ordinance and whether, another remedy would be to come, issue an order that the.
Original door be put back on.
Or, or that, that this, that the, the door be reviewed for compliance after the fact. But, because I'm not sure revoking, revoking this original status probably is not necessarily a detriment to the property owner. So really, it's, it's really compelling the property owners to, to meet the historical requirements, if it means going through the process after the fact, and if necessary, changing it again to a compliant door. It doesn't, you know, the, the, the process is necessarily not, if there's, if there's a door that's rotted and no longer effective, or it's, or it's got major, you know, weather issues, it can be replaced, it's just a question of the quality, character, nature of replacement must, must be compatible with the original historical character of the building. So it's not an issue they can't replace, it's just making sure that it is compliant.
Well, if it was the pleasure of the council to send this back to the, to the Historic Preservation Commission to further investigate this door that was recently installed, then they could look. look at it as though it was coming before them for an approval, couldn't they? I mean, couldn't they, couldn't they report back and say, if this had come before us, we would have said okay?
Yes, they could do that.
Or if this had come before us, we would have said no, and here's what we think should happen?
They could do that, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The vote was four to three, so it was definitely a mixed vote. But I think, and I agree with our council, we defer greatly to our Historic Preservation Commission, so I would like to see them go back and consider where it's at at the moment, and I would welcome their further discussion on this issue and like to hear from them again. So that's what would be my recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There was also concern about a wall as well, I believe, wasn't there Dave? There was a wall that was added as well, so it wasn't purely the door, it was also this wall. I did a real quick, good old Google, God, I love it, I found something, though. This is in a staff report from the City of San Diego, and it says, "How much money can I expect to save with the Mills Act?" Tax savings can be as much as sixty percent. There are some properties in the City of San Diego that are benefiting from savings of ninety percent on their taxes, so it is a reduction of taxes, not a benefit on the improvements. It says that the county assessor's office determines the tax savings by applying a complex formula. So it's clearly a numbers game of how they figured it out, but it appears that there's, can be between a sixty and ninety percent reduction of the property taxes. And it would be on the entire property, is my understanding, it wouldn't be purely on the actual house or the exterior.
No, it's on the entire property, but I was going to say, but that, and the savings, that complex formula exactly is a function of investment in the property. Yeah, it has to be, it's a result of invest, it's an incentive to invest in the property to preserve it.
They're not saying whether it's sixty percent of the investment or sixty percent of the overall property taxes, that's the thing that I'm.
It, yeah, it's a function of how much qualifying expenses that the property owner makes can be basically become a credit on property taxes.
And I think that the, if you look closely at that formula, if you have a piece of property that's landmarked but not worth very much because of its condition, and you go in there and spend a great deal of money renovating that property with the historical, attention to historical aspect of the property as you could, well, the end result could be that you're substantially saving the tax money on that property.
You put so much money.
Because you've put so much money into it. Yeah. All right, well, what's the, yes, Mayor Protem Strobel?
Okay, now, I've seen this happen time and again, and I'm going to put my two cents worth in to make sure that, or to try to make sure it doesn't happen again, and that is, we make a huge production, and in this case, over a door. The fact that, and you mentioned the wall, the wall, as I understand it, and whoever's around it can verify, at this point in time, the wall is not part of the landmark designation, correct?
Correct.
So we're not talking about the wall, we're talking about the door. The community does receive a benefit when one of its properties, and this is a magnificent property, it's the Loblesville property, is being preserved, and so that benefit, it has a landmark that there's been no question about. The incentive for that preservation is the Mills Act contract, and I think they have earned the tax break for the improvements, for the preservation of that home.
Okay, any other comments?
I have a comment, Mayor Blatts.
Yes, Councilwoman Laura.
I agree that they probably, this property is probably magnificent, and it deserves the Mills Act's agreement. But I think that it's, we've always, what I find alarming is the fact that we weren't able to answer if that's the original door, it's kind of he says, she said. And I think that if the Mills Act is that important, and we really have to be stringent on the qualification of a property to be considered under Mills Act, then we should provide our commission with adequate, better information rather than it just be a four-three vote. So I think that it's important to go back and send it to the Historic Preservation, but giving them information to determine whether this door was the original door, if it wasn't, and I don't know who the burden of proof is, whether it's the owner, Mr. Clark who believes that that original door that they took off wasn't actual original door or not, but I think that we need to be really specific and not even include the wall, because as it stands right now, it's not considered as a landmark. But I think that I would support that as a council.
I think that's probably what we ought to do as well, although I agree somewhat over the issue that we're talking about a door, and we've probably spoken about it for thirty-five or forty minutes now. But it's pretty important, I mean, our history of this community is important enough to spend more time than this on a door. I kind of feel as though we have the Historic Preservation Commission, who I personally think has extremely talented members that know the history of this town. Mr. Mason, you used to be on that commission. They don't deny things lightly, and it seems to me that by the applicant's own admission, that this door was recently changed out, where because it was a landmark property, the door probably should not have been changed out without having gotten some sort of an approval from the Historic Preservation Commission. That's not to say that this door might be better than the door that was taken out, it's not to say that that door that was taken out was an original door. But somehow, when anything is done to the exterior of that property, it should be approved, and it wasn't approved. For whoever decided that it wasn't necessary to approve the fact that the door should have come before the, for some sort of a, lack of a better word, architectural design review, or whatever it's going to be, that comes before the Historic Preservation Commission, you don't certainly have to get, you know, a planning commission approval for changing out a door. But I just think that because we're trying to keep the integrity of that property as it was originally landmarked, and we want to give you the Mills Act benefits, I just think we need to take another look at that door and make sure that whatever was done to that door is consistent with whatever was required, because it's a landmark.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That the door that is currently up, if it's the HPC's consideration that it is not add to the landmark status of the building, it should be replaced with one that does.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes.
When, Mr. Clark, when somebody has landmark status, are they given a packet telling them what their obligations are, that they are to come before planning or come before the HPC, whether, before anything's done, or was this something that?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what information was given.
That's important to know, too, because were they ever informed about what their obligations were when they were landmarked by the city?
And the other thing is that presumably, we think they were supposed to come before us, maybe they didn't have to, I don't know. But I think that that should be part of a staff packet back to the HPC, so that when it finally comes to us for the Mills Act status, that they're comfortable with it. Because I, for one, rely heavily on their expertise.
And four-three votes.
And it was a very close vote. Mayor Protem Strobel?
Okay, it sounds like we're going to have this brought back to somewhere, so since it looks like that's what's going to happen, I'd like clarification. Once the city makes, designates a property a landmark, the owner really doesn't receive any kind of packet or instructions about the maintenance requirements, et cetera. Is that pretty much accurate?
I'm saying I don't know the answer to that question.
But they do receive specific instructions, restrictions, et cetera, once they are within the Mills Act, correct?
Correct.
So while this is in process, I'd like those two issues clarified. Did we let them know? Is it just a catch-as-catch-can? What, you replaced the front door, didn't you know you couldn't do that? Have we told them they couldn't do that?
I understand the questions.
Okay.
The other question that I have, too, is, by us delaying the approval of the Mills Act, are we in any way causing them to incur additional costs? I mean, could the Mills Act be retroactive?
I doubt that.
No, I think it could.
I don't think it'd be retro, I don't know, and I don't know what it does for.
The assessor has to assess the property and increase its value.
I think, I don't know if they, no, I think they go through the formula and they determine how much qualifies for a tax break, I think is what's going to be the question, is what they have to do.
Well, somehow, somebody has to know
Yes.
That this particular project has been improved.
That's right.
And that's typically done through building permits, or by an assessor going out and looking at the property.
I don't know exactly, yeah, our agreement says they acknowledge that this requires a negotiation with the county assessor, so I assume, and they would put that burden on the property owner to do that, to get their tax break processed through the county.
Okay, so as we're going through this particular deliberation, isn't there a way that the county taxing authority could hold this in abance?
Don't know.
Mayor Blatts, the document is recorded, and the county assessor's office will go by the date.
But that's of the Mills Act.
There's an agreement in here that's recorded.
Right, I saw that.
So I don't know if that's what date they go by.
Well, we're only talking about the value of a door, I don't think it's going to increase the tax significantly, but I just hate if we find out that this door happens to be the one that should be there, and they've given up a substantial tax.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a little bit speculating here, but I believe it's a function, when the tax benefit will go into effect. Property tax rolls, you know, are issued in August for the succeeding year, so I'm going to somewhat speculate that they got till sometime in the summer to get the agreement approved through the county, so the revised rolls can be issued.
Okay. And we could have this back before us, within a couple of months, couldn't we? Right, yeah, it would have to go back to HPC and then back to you, so that'd probably take two months. Okay. Any further comments?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I'd like to see a peaceful resolution of this door issue. And so I would like to suggest that the applicant and our HPC commissioners objectively look at the question of this door. How important is the door in the overall scheme of things? You know, so rather, be open, meet with HPC, be open, be flexible, and let's have a peaceful resolution to this, and quickly.
We don't want another wall.
A wall, a door.
Anything further? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion that this issue with the, the issue of going ahead with the city council proving this for Mills Act status will, returning it back to the HPC to confer with the applicants and to find out more information about the door issue, and then the issue should return to the council in a reasonable amount of time.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. All right, moving on to our discussion items. Good luck to you with the door. Item number five, adoption of a resolution ratifying Ventura County Fire Protection District Ordinance Number Twenty-Eight, Appendix pertaining to Building Standards for Application Within the Jurisdictional Boundaries of the City of Ojai. Mr. Clark?
So let me just start by indicating that the state of California updates its codes, including the sections that are considered to be the fire code every three years, and those codes take effect by operation of law six months after they're published, so the 2013 version was published approximately July first and becomes effective on January first of 2014. The state codes are general in nature and apply throughout the state. However, local agencies are empowered to add to them by making more restrictive requirements that relate to local conditions, and generally do. In Ventura County, that responsibility falls to the Ventura County Fire District, and so the Fire District has developed local amendments to the state codes that apply to the circumstances that are unique within Ventura County and would not generally apply throughout the state. But in order for them to enforce those standards within the city of Ojai, the city council needs to adopt a resolution authorizing them to do so, and so that's what's before you tonight, whether you do or you do not want to authorize the local amendments and the enforcement of those. So tonight, we do have, I believe, Ventura County Fire Marshal Masad Araghi and Steve Stewart, our building official. Am I correct or not correct?
Well, the fire marshal became ill today, and so I have other representatives from the Ventura County here to answer any technical questions, mayor, and members of the council. We have with us Mike Malovich, the division chief in this regional area, and Larry Williams, who is a fire prevention officer, who's very familiar with the technical part of this code. As the city manager so eloquently indicated, you're asked this evening to ratify the Ventura County Fire Protection District Ordinance Number Twenty-Eight. In your, I have one change in your proposed resolution. The third whereas, it reads November twenty-sixth, the Board of Supervisors adopted these provisions, that was postponed to actually today. The Board of Supervisors adopted those provisions on December the tenth without changes. So what is referenced as draft in your document is now law by county statute. And the city manager pretty much covered the process that we're asking you to look at. Larry is here, if you have any technical questions in regards to those elements, and of course, I'm available for any questions that you may have as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any questions by the council? Yes.
When we receive something like this, and do we, do we simply adopt it because the county has recommended that we adopt it, or has a member of the staff reviewed and analyzed these recommendations to make sure that they can apply to Ojai? Has a staff member read and analyzed what we're being asked to approve?
I have gone through the ordinance, really, there hasn't been substantial changes from previous ordinances that this council has ratified in the past. This is pretty standard within Ventura County. Of course, the county fire prevention only enforces regulations within the unincorporated and the cities in which they provide fire service. The cities that have their own fire department typically have their own fire prevention services, and this is pretty common throughout Ventura County in the language.
I understand that it's I understand that it's a common and a regular occurrence, that the fire codes are updated every X number of years. What I'm asking is, has our staff reviewed it to know that it's compatible with our goals here in Ojai? Or do we simply present it to council to be approved because the county has asked us to?
So the answer to that question is that we have asked Mr. Stewart to review it, as he indicated. And so that's the only review that's occurred at our staff level.
And Mr. Stewart, did you find any portions of that that caused you hesitation, that it would not suit the city of Ojai to have that standard? Or any areas which you had to call the fire marshal and question him on?
I did not talk to the fire marshal in detail about this because, in essence, the proposed ordinance is very similar to what has been enforced in Ojai for a number of years. And I looked at it from that light. Did they make any substantial changes that would need discussion? And I did not find any of that status.
Okay. One more comment. And that is, if it's very similar with very few changes...
Mike. My bother.
Why bother? I mean, what are we just...
Your microphone.
This is a lot of... If it's very similar, why is it even before us? And this is a lot of information to be just a repeat of past recommendation... Recommended ordinances.
It's the normal protocol that we re-adopt the code changes every three years because, in essence, we have a brand-new code. And so we would have to make changes related to that new code. It's kind of a perfunctory act in some way, but it is a technical act for legal adoption process.
I noticed some of the fire marshals come up, so perhaps he could...
Everybody likes to talk.
Larry likes to talk.
Speak to probably that and...
Just for point of clarification, good evening. Larry Williams, Fire Prevention Officer with Ventura County Fire Protection District. And actually, I actually was here three years ago when we were reviewing the proposed ordinances before your council and stuff, and was involved with the right last year. Yes, it's a large document, but actually, the only portion that is before your council tonight is Appendix L, the Fire Protection Systems. The rest of the ordinance is already in effect and is done to the Board of Fire Directors for the Fire Protection Districts, which serves your city here and the citizens. One point we want to look... You commented about this being consistent and common throughout Ventura County. You have to understand that fire doesn't recognize boundaries of city limits, counties, et cetera. It looks at what it can burn and plus, you know, fire safety and prevention of the acts of what the public does. So we feel that this is what we need to have for the citizens we serve. But the point, the only item that you're actually ratifying is the Fire Protection Systems. State law did change, does require a fire protection system in all residential dwellings, so there's really no change to what we're doing. Everything in there has been in existence and continuing for. It's just a formality we have to go through because it is more restrictive on some of the aspects when we get into the commercial buildings for the fire protection systems.
So the major change is on Appendix L?
Actually, there's no change to Appendix L. There's a couple of clarifications and a definition that we use, but the actual requirements of the fire protection system, there's no change.
Okay. And if Mr. Stewart could tell me what page Appendix L is on, because I'm not finding it. Twenty-eight?
Yeah, or 5-32.
I'll have to open the document here.
It's on page 5-32.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I just have the ordinance, so I have it starting on page 27 of the actual ordinance.
And the reason for these questions is, we've had comments and the issue come up in the past regarding sprinkler systems. And so that's what I'm looking for, frankly.
There's actually state law changes that now are going to require fire protection systems in all single-family and multifamily residence. They're already a state-mandated requirement. So that is really nothing that we have local control over. That's a state mandate on us. What this Appendix L does is provides requirements for commercial industrial buildings and how we deal with additions onto single-family homes. But it's been in effect for a number of years by the county.
So, Mr. Stewart, I take it that this entire document that we're asked to look at tonight has been, and it alone, as far as fire prevention and regulations, has been incorporated by reference into our building code?
No, that's within the county. We're just ratifying this. If you'd like to incorporate that when we bring back the entire Title 24, we could do that as a requirement. But this is just ratification of what the county did today.
Okay. But how do we know how this conflicts with our existing building code?
It doesn't. It's a sister document that goes along with our state-mandated codes.
So when it talks about single-family dwellings requiring sprinklers or carport setbacks at 25 feet and that kind of thing, that's all consistent with no ambiguity to our building code. Is that correct?
There's provisions that are added in the fire code provisions, but the text of the fire code is compatible with our state-mandated building codes. And I think he's...
If I could, you mentioned you comment in regards to carport setbacks.
Yeah.
When you look at the actual section where there's a lot of these starting under L 103.1 buildings, there's a list of exceptions here. What we've done is, outside of the single-family residence and your typical commercial occupancies, the prior ordinances said you had to sprinkler everything. But do we really want to sprinkler exterior open carport or do a picnic shelter at a park? A small freestanding restroom building at a park? Is that really the intent of what we were trying to do? And we said no. So in order to codify it, we actually needed to put it in the ordinance. So there's at least two pages of actual exceptions in the criteria to meet that exception, which benefits those small incidental projects that has no effect on fire protection, fire safety.
And I don't have any objection to that. What I just want to be absolutely clear on is that the provisions of this particular code do not just add another layer onto our particular code so that you not only have to look at our building code, but then you have to look at this building code and that there are absolutely no ambiguities between the two. That's what I'm concerned about.
Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah. In actuality, the reason we're here is because of a more restrictive building standard. The remainder of the items in here are not building standards, because if they were, those would need to be ratified. So in essence, other than the fire sprinkler requirements, that's the only item identified as a more restrictive building standard that the city is already enforcing. Again, because there's really no changes and has adopted in prior councils over the years. Plus, we work with each of our building officials. When we have any change that affect building standards, make sure that they're aware of them. We've worked with the building officials in all six of the cities, plus the unincorporated area that we serve.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council?
I just may add, when we do bring back the building code, the fire department will have some added recommendations to the building code for recommendations that will bring forward for council consideration. So we can continue to be consistent on that. But the basic documents are consistent.
Okay. My only comment is, why do we need to have consistency? Why don't we just have one part of the code that says what this needs to say? Why do we need it anywhere else for consistency?
Well, there's... That's a question you'll have to ask the state, because they adopt a fire code that has exact same language as the building code when it affects structures.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I make the suggestion in the future, it would be helpful for the council, who are not fire experts or building officials, if, in fact, a presentation like this would say, these are the changes from three years ago, such as Appendix L. And the reason that it was done, as you just explained to us, was because of small structures like picnic tables, et cetera. So that makes sense to me and sense to the mayor pro tem. But these are the only changes from three years ago. And how would it affect our building codes? It won't because of. And then I think this discussion would have gone much more smoothly. That would be my suggestion for the future.
And it's noted.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions of Mr. Stewart or the fire marshal? No? Thank you very much. This is a discussion item. I don't have any cards on it, but is there anyone wishing to speak? Yes, Bill.
Fascinating, listening to that discussion. I wanted to amplify what Councilman Smith just said. That's a standard that should be met before the council acts, not just, well, let's ratify this and do that in the future. I really think, if you listen carefully to what was being said about things like the sprinkler systems in structures, residential and commercial, exceptions, exactly what is the city's discretion on this? What isn't the city's discretion? I didn't hear a lot of clarity there. And it seems to me that exactly what you said ought to be required by a staff report before action on something that could have such a great cost impact on property owners. So I would really suggest, after listening to that, that we follow your recommendation and get that before the council, before ratifying this, to fully understand exactly what's going on here. Second point is a question of the gentleman. Is there any change in the fire risk zones in this ratification, in this suggestion? Are there any change? I was wondering if there's any, you know, insurance impacts in terms of any changes in the fire risk zones. I haven't read this, and it's my mistake, I haven't read it. But I think that's also important. But I think the sprinkler system issue is important, and I really agree with what you should say, and that should be in front of you before action. Thank you.
I just have a question for Mr. Clark. Is there a deadline by which this has to be adopted?
I'll defer to the fire chief.
Larry Williams, for the record, response to two questions. Yes, the ordinance will go in effect 30 days from the date it was adopted by the Board of Fire Directors, which was today. So it goes in effect, I believe that's January 9th. Your ratification goes in effect, just authorizes us to apply those requirements in the city effective that date. If you delay your ratification, then it delays the implementation of the items that have been basically enforced and provided for the protection of your residents here since 1982. When we first put fire sprinkler ordinance before the fire directors and to the cities. And then we've continued each year to go through and ratify those sprinkler, you know, those requirements and provide that protection. So that answers that date. You also had a gentleman made a comment regarding fire risk zones. This has nothing to do with fire risk zones. That's a process by the state of California, especially in the unincorporated areas and in high-risk areas within the local areas, within your city boundaries. The state maps go through a five-year review. 2015 is the five-year review period. We'll be starting that during 2014 for the 2015 update.
Okay. One question. So you're saying that our lack of rat... By our lack of ratification of this prior to January the 7th, is that... Was that the date?
January 9th.
January 9th.
I believe it's the date.
By operation of law, we then have, in the city of Ojai, no ordinance with regard to fire?
No, you have an ordinance for fire because, again, the state fire code and our ordinance is in effect in the city, other than Appendix L, where it's more restrictive than the state standard. Because as a special district, fire district, we serve the citizens, they're part of our district here, but the state law says if we're gonna have any more restrictive building standard, that has to be ratified by the jurisdiction that's being enforced in. As far as residential structures, state law mandates it. So you're gonna have that anyway. Certain commercial occupancies, assemblies, it does. The remainder of the items where we are more restrictive is, we went in 2007, we went from a 5,000-square-foot rule of requiring fire sprinklers in all new structures to a zero-square-foot ordinance, which is consistent with a lot of other jurisdictions throughout California. Your council ratified applying that in the city to provide that protection. Because again, the basis, the findings for being more restrictive are based on certain aspects of state law. There has to be a climatic, topographical, other type of features of why we'd have that, because we have the Santa Ana winds like we had today, we had a 50-acre brush fire in Moore Park. If we have a fire in a structure, we don't want to have to commit a lot of resources to it. That fire sprinkler systems, basically, especially in the commercial occupancies, are designed to extinguish the fires. In a residential environment, they're designed for life safety, but they've actually put the fire out. And I can contest personally of having a brand-new house and having a fire in a garage from the construction, my family there, and that sprinkler did its job, put the fire out, and I lived in my house, stayed in my house that night. It is an important item for fire protection for your community here, and we would ask that you not delay that portion. Again, that's the only piece, and it's currently what's already being applied. There's no new requirements, it's just carrying it over. The only change in Appendix L was clarification of some of the language and some definitions, but it has no effect in being more restrictive than what's already being applied in your city.
So what risk do we put the citizens of Ojai at if we don't ratify this tonight and we ask staff to come back with us in January with a red-line version?
You could have applications for new buildings coming in that are not mandated by state law. We would not be able to enforce those requirements upon them. If we had large residential additions come in, which is over 50% or greater than a 1,000-square-foot addition, we would not be able to require the retrofit into those structures that we have been requiring since 1982.
Okay, but you're saying that this code is more restrictive than the state code. Therefore, what is it that we ratified the last time that's being made more restrictive this time?
It is the provisions for fire sprinklers in a lot of the commercial buildings, unless they're already specifically, and you'd have to... There's such a detailed list of, you know, depending on the use, you know, if it's an assembly occupancy, does it have so much square foot or so many people? Then you get sprinklers. If it's under, you don't. I mean, there's a whole variety of hazards uses when you're dealing with your commercial, industrial-type uses. But when it comes to your multifamily and your residential, the state already has that in effect. That went in effect during the last code cycle, so there's no effect there. The only other effect for residential would be on additions. If you have an addition that's greater than 50% of the existing square footage and has to be at least 1,000 square feet, you know, if someone's got a small 1,500-square-foot house and they want to add, we allow them the first 1,000 feet, we don't look at the percentage. That way, they already get that benefit of trying to improve their property for living, et cetera. But if they add more than 1,000 feet and more than 50%, they are required to retrofit. That's been consistent through the years there. We used to have 50%. We allowed 1,000 square foot in the last code cycle. But this code cycle, there's no change in what you're already having us apply in the city here.
Well, I guess I'm just a little confused is, if there's really not that many changes, what the harm would be for us to ask it to come back before us in a month for ratification with a red-line version so we really do know what's mandated, what's not mandated, how it affects the other portions of our building? how it affects the other portions of our building code? I can't believe we don't have something in our building code now that requires sprinklers in commercial buildings.
The state building code exempts a lot of commercial buildings.
But does the Ojai code exempt the sprinklers in commercial buildings right now?
Typically, the fire requirements for fire protection system, other than the state building code, has been left to the discretion of the fire district of what's best for fire protection. So, because we do all the fire sprinkler reviews, inspections, annual five-year reports on them, et cetera, the maintenance of it, all the jurisdictions typically, that comes into the fire district for its preview. So because of that, and because of the joint, like Mr. Stewart said, between, the matching between the codes, they used to be uniform because they'd have consistency through them, that discretion, that more restrictive standard's always been left to the fire district. And we carry it forward in our code, because everyone has to come through us to determine what their requirements for their water supply, their access, their fire protection, before they ever go for a building permit. So it's being addressed, it's in all the handouts, so they're aware of it, so they're not having to run around, you know, trying to figure out which code. It's always out there in front for them, so they're well aware of it when they come to develop.
Could I ask a question? Because I think, I understand what you're saying, which I think is different from what he's saying, but I'm, I'm not sure. And if I ask a question, I might be able to figure it out.
Okay.
So I think you're saying that the, the local amendments in total are fairly extensive, historically. But ninety-five percent of them are staying the same, and the only portion of the local amendments that are changing are those portions that you outlined in, in Appendix L?
No, the, again, the only thing before your board is Appendix L. The rest of the, any of those changes, there are some that, new stuff, and there's some stuff that's been carried over. But those are not before your board for ratification.
Okay.
The fire district, as the jurisdiction, has that authority already and has been done through our adoption of the board. Appendix L sprinkler systems is the only item, and there's been no changes in actual requirements of sprinklers between the last ordinance.
So if they were, if the city council were to hold up action on Appendix L until January fourteenth, which is their next meeting, so that there can be a red line showing the differences between that and what exists now, that's about a one-week delay. Would, does that create a problem?
I don't believe it would, but I believe we'd already provided that analysis in, to the city of what the changes were.
There's a summary in the back of your packet on the, what the changes were, and in addition to that, and the vast majority of all of these are, are the same language from the previous adopted, or minor changes, which, as I stated earlier, really don't affect the outcome of that. But we can certainly go through what those affected changes are. And what, what, I think what Larry's trying to tell you is, is that the majority of this code is going to be actually enforced within the city of Ojai. But what he's, what he's trying to say is that the Board of Supervisors has the authority for that adoption. What the council basically has authority is whether they want to make any changes to Appendix L. And in the Fire Prevention Bureau, the county fire department is recommending that you adopt these provisions, and, and this has been consistent since, as he stated, since nineteen eighty-two. But if the city council would like us to do a more comprehensive review of Appendix L, we'd be happy to do that and bring back additional information in that regard.
Hey, Erbilats?
Yes.
I do have a couple comments. And I'm glad Mayor Pro Tem Strobel asked the question. It alarms me that we didn't, as a staff, we didn't have a better prepared of what exactly we're going to be looking at. And what it sounds to me is that even if we were to come back with these items and just strike the language to make sure that we're ratifying a resolution appropriately, I think that it, it possibly doesn't have any negative effects. I think that's just the proper way of, of dealing with this situation and having it go back to staff. So I understand that either way, these are mandates from the state, and there's really nothing changing, but I think it's worth it for us to come back and look at it better because reading all this, it just, I, I didn't know what exactly I was looking at, what exactly the changes were. It wasn't clarified specifically in the staff report. So I would be for voting to come back for in, in January, the second Tuesday of the month, so.
If, if I can just add one comment to you. As Mr. Stewart mentioned in your packet here on page five dash sixty-nine, in the matrix, in the chart there, those are the actual changes from the prior ordinance to this ordinance. And the summary of the change is listed on the right-hand side there. It's basically just changing the term, some terminology, clarification of when it applies, change of terminology from, you know, fire protection to fire sprinkler, that comes up a couple times, just cleanup language as far as where we're repeating something to, to not repeat it. And that was, that was basically, and moving the findings in ratification out of the Appendix L to the main body of the code. Those were basically the changes that were done from the prior ordinance.
I, I had reviewed the, these proposed changes, but there was nowhere in our packet that indicated, the only thing that we were ratifying were changes to Appendix L. And there's a heck of a lot more changes in here than just changes to Appendix L.
I think we are ratifying the entire document, but the only thing the city council has authority to make recommendations for changes would be Appendix L.
Mayor Pro Tem Strobel?
Okay, this is what I'm, I'm actually getting at, and I probably went all around the bush to get there. I'm familiar with these changes we do every three years, and you're probably right, we're already enforcing them, they're not going to be that, that much of a difference. What I do not see in the staff report is what does it mean for Ojai? I feel left out. I want to know, I, I don't want you to tell me, well, the state says so. I don't want you to tell me, well, the county says so. The counties are more restrictive than the state. I want you to tell me in what way is it more restrictive, and how does it impact my city?
I'd be happy to work with the Fire Prevention Bureau and provide that detailed analysis.
And I, I also think that that's important, not only for us, but the public, Mr. Stewart, because we have a lot of, a lot of members of the public that provide their input for us at these meetings, that I rely on heavily. And without them being able to adequately review what's coming before us, I don't feel we're necessarily making decisions based on the best possible information available to us. So that, that would be what I would like.
And, and I'd like to apologize, Mayor. My intent in reviewing this is what, what significant changes were from the previous ratification to this, to this ordinance. And so I didn't, I didn't pursue exactly what the code changes, how they affect the city of Ojai. I was just comparing apples to apples. But I clearly understand the council's direction, that they would like a little more detail in how it'll affect those provisions, not just the changes, but the provisions as written. And we'll be happy to work with Fire Prevention and bring that back to you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Clapp?
I think the most important thing about this discussion has been why I really like working with this group of people, is that when a huge document that is laws coming before us, we don't just go, oh, okay. It's nothing against you, it's just that I really like that we don't just say, oh, okay, or it's always been done this way, and yeah, there's a few changes, and okay, let's do it, bang, we're done. I think we take seriously the things that we put our names to, you know? And, and I think that's a really important thing, and I'm really glad that our council is really concerned about what we're approving or not approving, because it's real easy to look at something like this and go, oh, man, it's nine-thirty, I want to go home. But it's really important, so I want to thank my colleagues.
And I also think that this council, particularly when we hear that this is the way we've always done it before, becomes very leery of that. And automatically, we're going to say, we better look between the lines and, and make sure we know what we're doing, because we don't particularly like to do things the way things were done before.
Understood.
Okay? So do you need anything other than to continue this matter?
Yeah, just continue it to the fourth.
Do we need a motion to do that? Okay. Then we'll continue it to a future, hopefully, the first meeting in January, if we have time? Okay. All right, item six on our agenda is another discussion item. It's the two thousand thirteen road rehabilitation project, WPW two thousand ten dash one. And I would imagine Mr. Grant's going to be talking about this one. Welcome, Mr. Grant.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Yes, back last year, we were awarded a $400,000 federal surface transportation grant for road rehabilitation. And we took that road rehab grant that we got, we combined it into a larger bid package that included the road, the residential roads that we're going to pave. It also included the pedestrian improvements that we had planned out. There were some walkways and some pedestrian crosswalks we talked about before. And also, there was some storm drain improvements that were added to that as well. So all that was put in a very large bid package at approximately $900,000. We advertised this bid package in November, and the bids were open last Thursday. We sent out supplements to the council last week that summarized those changes, and the apparent low bidder was reviewed, and there were several mathematical mistakes found in the bid. There is guidance from the California Public Contract Code, which tells us how to handle those. Unfortunately, it doesn't sound like a great way to hire a new contractor to have a lot of mathematical errors in the bid, but that is sometimes anticipated and provided for in the law, and we can reject a bid for that reason. So after the correction, the low bidder remained J&amp;H Engineering, General Contractors, out of, yeah, they're, they're local, I'm trying to think they're out of Ventura, I believe. And their, their low bid was $950,658 after the adjustment. The recommendations and fiscal, fiscal impacts that were in the initial supplement were revised in the supplement that you received, and, and also revised the contingency from, down from twelve percent to ten percent to help us stay within our expected capital improvement changes. So that would be, the proposed construction schedule would now be to provide a notice proceed, assuming that the council awarded that contract tonight in mid-January. Because of these provisions of this federal surface transportation grant, we have to still go through another step and have this award package, presumably that occurs tonight, taken through Caltrans for improvement, for approval. Once they approve it, we can give them a notice proceed and get moving. And that would, that's kind of been the delays in this contract all along, is trying to get the Caltrans approvals for these grants. And so that would allow us to finish the work, depending on weather. If we get really cold days, it may delay things, but if we get a few, a couple warm weeks, we should be able to knock out most of this paving. So the fiscal impact was a couple proposed revisions, and that was to increase the budget, the budget for the, from the drainage fund, it was an initial capital improvement program, by $63,476. And also to increase the budget for the capital improvement fund by $94,448. And that would provide for all, all of the anticipated work in the contract. And I think the supplement that we sent out today had the, the recommendations in it, they're kind of extensive, so I didn't want to read them.
All right.
Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Grant?
A comment, not a question. I really appreciated the, the supplements as, as things changed, so that it allowed me to know all that had transpired. And so, because of that, I don't have any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Greg, how come Oriole Street is now included, but why wasn't it done last spring? Wasn't Oriole Street originally going to be done right around the summertime or so? Now, I have been getting complaints from Oriole Street residents about telling them it was going to be done, and it never got done.
And so have we, we've received a few complaints as well. And I guess, I think there's some major efficiencies with combining this big federal grant with a residential. So we anticipated we could get approvals and have this paving done in the summer. But it, it sometimes takes a long time to get Caltrans approvals.
So you originally thought it would be done, and now the, the new schedule is this schedule.
Yeah. And it really takes the whole paving job up from a three, I think we were going to do $300-plus-thousand dollars last year. Now we're paving up towards nine, about $800,000, about $100,000.
So when exactly will Oriole Street be done?
Depending on weather, it should be February.
All righty.
If we, we need a couple warm weeks in there to get this paving done.
Please tell the residents the new anticipated date, so they don't complain to me at work. Thank you.
Glad to.
Any other questions of Mr. Grant or comments? This is a discussion item. Is there anybody in the audience wanting to address us? No? All right. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt or approve staff recommendations number one, two, three, and four.
Second?
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Slatt?
Yes. All right, that's going to be a great project. Thank you very much for all your, your hard work on that. Agenda item seven, another discussion item, is E.J. Harrison &amp; Sons, Inc., franchise agreement. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Grant, would you make this question?
Okay. Welcome again.
Welcome. Good evening, everybody, again. Yes, son, this is to cover the city's solid waste franchise agreement. It was first executed in July of two thousand four with E.J. Harrison &amp; Sons, and I believe they've been a longstanding franchise agreement back in the city for a long time. And, but it expires on June thirtieth of two thousand fourteen, coming up in about six months. It was amended, for your information, back in two thousand six to include street sweeping. That was a major amendment that was done. It was currently, we're doing, we're, we're having a performance review done on the contract as to check everything and get all kinds of performance records from Harrison as a final review of their contract, which is required in that contract, in the, in the franchise agreement we had. It's an, is an important factor to our franchise agreement. The county is presently requesting proposals for their franchise agreements that expire throughout all the unincorporated areas. They expire in March of two thousand fourteen, which is only three months away. So we were hoping to take a good look at their agreement and piggyback on it somewhat. Obviously, their major impact to the Ojai Valley, what is going on with the refuse surface, refuse service and recycling within the rest of the valley. They've had some problems with theirs, they were RFP-ing the whole process, and it was delayed. And they, they landed up pulling back from that, and are now, the hearsay is, it's fairly, fairly confidential negotiations ongoing, but they are negotiating with E.J. Harrison on possibly an extended agreement. But that's not definite yet, we haven't got final information. So that, that is important to us to understand what kind of pricing they get. Obviously, if we had one franchise holler in our city versus the rest of the county, that probably wouldn't be efficient. So I, I think we'll find that working with that holler is probably best for us, although that'll be up to the council to decide. So the staff is recommending a one-year extension. If we took, instead of waiting until this is worked out, up towards March, we're in a tight squeeze for that last three months, it seems like a great opportunity, and I've talked to Harrison, and they're open to it, to extend our contract for one year, and we can see where the county goes. We can also test out a lot of provisions that we would like to see incorporated in the contract, and I, I listed quite a few of those in the administrative report. But there's quite a few interesting things we could do with that agreement and test them out over the next year. You know, picking up refuse within a lot of the city's facilities and more street, more frequent street sweeping has been a complaint by some residents in the fall to help pick up leaves. And it's quite a few issues, I guess, I listed in the administrative report I could go over if you would like. And one of them's an interesting thing, that they now have GIS units on street sweepers, so you can actually get performance now have GIS units on street sweepers, so you can actually get performance reports on street sweepers to tell how fast they track our streets and do they get all the streets. It's hard for us to follow these street sweepers around. So there's a neat little program. We can look at it now and say, "Hey, they got all the streets," and look at the speed and how well they recovered. And that's kind of a neat option as well we'd like to try out. So at this time, staff is recommending that we, you know, present the performance review that we'll have complete, and then any new information from the county's negotiations, and present options for a one-year extension to that contract, and come back to you in February with that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Any questions, comments? Councilwoman Smith?
Okay. In reality, though, of course, it would be more efficient if county goes with Harrison. Are you talking about the whole county or just the West County? Because there's a lot of other haulers in other parts of the county.
They are doing separate negotiations for each geographic area.
Yeah, that's what I thought. My next question is, I was in Berkeley for this weekend, and they have a third bin, and it's all for food waste. And I know that was the new, when I've talked to Nan of Harrison, I know that's the new frontier, to cut down on restaurant food waste and everybody's food waste. And I was very delighted to see Berkeley doing it, but they're usually on the forefront of these things. And I'd be excited if there was a hauler who was potentially able to offer that to us yet. I don't know. I know Harrison is looking into it, but food waste is definitely the next frontier.
And that's something we put in the administrative report as a possible option in the extension to require it. At this time, they haven't permitted that facility. They've had trouble permitting their big facility that they're trying to get opened in Santa Paula. But there is, I should mention, some pilot programs for food waste disposal within the city. So we've got that happening right now over at the Ojai Valley Inn. That's probably the largest place. Westridge Market is happening. And we've got some of it going on downtown here at the Plaza. So we're part of the pilot program within the county.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Grant?
Yes. You mentioned street sweeping and the GIS being able to tell whether they, how fast they swept. Does it tell whether or not they're driving like this, or whether they're driving straight?
I can't say I've investigated that part yet. But we'll see if we can find out about that.
This has been kind of an ongoing concern of mine, that part of street sweeping, there's a combination of things. First of all, people are paying to have their streets swept. And number two, they're not getting it done because people are parking in front of their houses, and you don't have control over who parks in front of your house. And also, there's an obligation on our part to have the streets swept, not only because it looks nicer, but because of the debris that goes into the stormwater systems, animal feces, all, any number of things. The old rubber off of tires, it's all toxic, that's going down the waste drains. And this isn't being taken care of. And in the past, there's been concerns with prior councils that they didn't want to have what they called sign blight by having signs out requiring people to move their car on street sweeping days. And I just wanted to bring it up again because I think this is an ongoing problem that really needs to be addressed. And I would like this council to maybe bring this up again at a future council meeting, to come up with some sort of way to deal with this problem because this, people aren't getting the service that they're paying for, and we're not really meeting our obligation on stormwater law. Purely hiring Harrison to do it, but knowing it's not getting done, is kind of disingenuous on our part. So I'd like to see.
If one week, they just swept up the car that was illegally parked there and dumped it on the top, that would get some notice.
Unbelievable.
People just feel they can park anywhere they darn please, anytime, anywhere. That's the right of being in California, as it has been.
And then there's trash underneath the cars. There's spider webs on the cars.
Everywhere.
There's, it's, I sweep the front of my house every week, and I end up with about three piles of stuff because I, there's a, not a lot of off-street parking on my street, so people are parking on the street. So I'm paying for service I'm not getting, so I know it irks me. And I just think that it's unfair to the citizens.
All right. Well, let's deal with what's before us, the franchise agreement. And then we can discuss, well, do we want the issue to come back before us on a future agenda. So if there aren't any further questions, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Public.
Oh, public. Oh, I'm sorry. It is a discussion item. Is there anybody in the public wishing to address us? Sure, come on up. Sorry, Scott.
Scott Iker. I live at 501 Park Road. On the issue of notifying people about doing the street sweeping, I think that if that's included in Harrison's contract, it would be a simple matter for them to add street sweeping days onto the calendar that they send out to all of their clients. And they say it's recyclables or greenways and street sweeping. That would solve it right away. I know that twice I have come home and parked in front of my house at lunch. I'm there 45 minutes, and the street sweeper goes right around my car before I can run out and move it. You know, and it's just one of those things. There's no sign telling me which Tuesday it is and which Tuesday's the other Tuesday that it's not coming down the street. So that's a simple solution on, as far as notifying people when that's going to happen. I think almost everyone looks at that calendar every Monday or whenever their trash is picked up to see whether it's a brown or a blue day. So that's just a sort of suggestion.
Okay. Councilwoman Clapp?
Scott, that has been put in the newsletter consistently. Maybe they've dropped it off recently. One of the things is, you have control over who parks in front of your house, but you don't have control who other people are that park in front of your house. So that's sort of voluntary compliance. And we've done two studies, I think, already on how many houses, how many cars have been on the street. And people just don't have control over who parks in front of their house. So it really is, we're not being real effective.
Any other comments? Okay. Any other public comment on this? All right. I'll bring it back to council. Did we have a?
Do we have a motion?
We had a motion. That was just part of our discussion. Okay? Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. That was our further discussion. Is there any further discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Slatt?
Yes. We're going to move on to item number eight, the arcade crime issues. This is Chief Kenny, and with a participation from Mr. Fletcher as well. I'll turn it over to you two gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Members of the council, if you'll recall, during our last city council meeting, concern merchant came up, and she outlined a list of concerns that she had in the arcade. And I will point out that when she made those comments, she also said that things had greatly improved, and that was due to some deputies that were doing some foot patrols in there. In regards to her concerns, I took a six-month look at the calls for service for the arcade, and I came up with 240 different calls for service over the last six months. Of those, 164 were the actual people in the arcade calling in, and the other 76 were the deputies doing self-initiated calls. Of those, 196, there was no crime. And out of those 240, we made 14 arrests, and we issued four citations. And so I was looking for trends or anything of that nature, but really, the crimes that people are calling in for, they were all over the board. The ones that were, we have a large number of, it was subjects disturbing, we only made one arrest. Narcotics violations, we had six calls, there were no arrests. The deputy contacts, we made a couple arrests. But for the most part, a lot of those are being cleared, no crime. So our efforts to date, we continued with what we were doing before she called. We identified the people that were hanging out in the area, and we've encouraged them to move on. We've contacted the merchants in the area and encouraged them to continue calling us. We've done extra patrol there. The deputies now do foot patrols in there on, in the morning, at night, and during dawn shift. We worked with the city and Greg Grant's people. We had the trees trimmed, so it's more light comes through the area. The area where she was making reference to people getting behind the buildings to use it for a restroom, we had the city install a gate, and we had that gate locked. We put in motion sensor lights. We've also worked with the city as well as Chevron to turn off electricity or cover all of the open electricity boxes because people were using those to charge their cell phones. Yeah. We've also got a donation for paint, and we're going to have the area painted because it wasn't looking very good. And then we also had it steam cleaned back there to make it look nicer. So, and we've also worked with the school administrators to keep the students out as well. And so the citizen who had those concerns, she's emailed us twice, and she's extremely thankful. She noticed a tremendous improvement. We're going to continue with those efforts. We're going to continue with the patrol presence in the area. We're going to attend the merchants' meetings as well, and continually encourage people to call us so we know what's going on, and we can come and handle it. So right now, I think we're doing a good job.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any comments by the council or questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Well, great job, Chief Kenny. I do appreciate you responding really quickly, also to the fact that there was a misinterpretation or miscommunication with what you said about the Chaparral high school students. I had the opportunity to go to one of their student council meetings, and it was very delightful, and we're really happy of how well you responded. The school administrator are really happy with the relationship that you have with them. Speak highly of you. I just, you mentioned, I do have a couple of questions regarding the actual calls of narcotics and, I guess, it was more of the pit bulls, they had pit bulls, these drug addicts. You said there was no arrests. Were they just, were they no arrests because they left before the police got there? Or were they just told to leave?
Yeah. I mean, out of the calls that I made reference to, we did make 14 arrests and issued four citations. And the citations are usually a cite and release, so they're also an arrest. So basically, 18 arrests. Out of all of those calls I made reference to, 196 contact was made, and it was determined there was no crime. So if someone has a pit bull back there and it's on a leash, it's not a crime. If I could show you this spreadsheet of all the calls, they kind of spread the whole gamut. It goes from shoplifting, cruelty to animals, which is usually people leaving their dogs in the car. We get a cruelty to animal car call because the windows are up and the dog's in the car. Noise disturbances, found property, lost property, goes across the whole thing. But in reference to what River was talking about, I would say it has to be the subjects disturbing. We got 18 calls of subjects disturbing. We only made one arrest. We're making contact, but there's either someone doesn't want to prosecute, or there's no crime. For drunk in public, there was 14 calls of people calling in drunks in public. We only made two arrests. Okay? So we have to determine if the person that's drunk in public is a danger to themselves. And if they are a danger to themselves, such as being passed out and some of the things that were referenced, we do take them in. But what I'm trying to, the point that I was trying to make is that of all of these calls, we are going out there, we are making contact with these people, but we're not able to determine a crime. It's not a crime to loiter or do things like that back there. And so that's what we were doing. That's the point I was trying to make to you.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Is there anything, and I don't know if there is, and maybe this is a question for Rob Clark, is there anything the city could do to help or inform these people of services that they could, or, I just would hate to just displace this problem to different areas instead of offering some services for them to get help. That's all. And I know there's a certain limit that any individual or agency could do to help these people, but I just wonder if there's just some effort that we're doing to, information to inform these people, or?
I would say no. We're, you know, we're pretty much handling this through law enforcement. We do, of course, in the community, have a winter homeless shelter program, and that's a way to provide shelter in an appropriate location versus inappropriate locations. But it is a difficult problem, and I'm not sure we've hit on any particular answer. There is one other item that we've discussed a little bit, and maybe Chief Kenny could talk about this a little bit, which is the idea of potentially prohibiting smoking in the arcade area. And...
Yeah. In looking at, in identifying what was going on back there and looking at some of the photos that we took, the area was being used for a large gathering spot for people to smoke and hang out. And so we were trying to think of ways to make it, the area not conducive to wanting to be there. So if you want to smoke, you're not going to be there. Pretty much everyone there was smoking, and that was one of the observations that was made by one of my staff. So that was an idea that we floated, that if we wanted to, you know, the loitering, it's not illegal to stand back there and do nothing. But it would be illegal to stand back there and smoke, just like drinking in public. You know, they can't drink back there. They'd have to hide it. They would have to hide it from us. But at least we would have an enforcement option. Right now, we can encourage people to leave back there. We can't make them leave.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've looked at, we have a smoking ordinance that really, today, really is limited to, actually predated, of course, state law, limited to inside spaces, what we define as public places. But since, you know, the last few years, a lot of communities have gone to banning smoking, either like on beaches, in parks, or, and/or within so many feet of a door or opening to a business. I've looked at the ordinance. It wouldn't be a substantial amendment to propose to you that would give the police department one more, one more tool to use to deal with the loitering question. One other option we've looked, I've looked at it in terms of, we can't loiter, we can't prohibit loitering during the day. Now, another option might be whether we have the ability to close the arcade like a park and have hours, hours people can be there, treated as in some form of a park. But there's a lot of questions about, you know, there's both public property and private property mixed together there within the arcade. And it's something we could look at doing. I also want to, we've had, you know, the citations that the sheriff's issues go to my office, we've had over the last six months. I have four, three cases, four cases, three cases currently where we've had citations for mostly drinking in public in the arcade, where we've gotten plea agreements with stay-away orders. Many of those are expiring. Usually, it's for six months at a time. Those, there's still one in effect, and then we may be having a case go into trial in the next week or so, dealing with drinking in the arcade, that we will, of course, seek a stay-away order if we get a conviction. So we're also trying to follow through on these citations, getting something to keep people away, the violators away from the area.
I would like to, for you to present potential no smoking near door, within 20 feet of doorways or whatever. I would like to look into that at council's pleasure for adding to our no smoking.
Doorways or outside as well?
No.
The whole thing he was talking about.
Well, whatever he would come, I don't know what would be appropriate, but I do agree that...
If it's a definable enough area as the arcade, we could, since it's a place of public assembly, it's a place we could identify like no smoking in a park or no smoking on a beach.
Yeah. It's, you know, a lot of the stores that are in the arcade have a back door that's on the arcade plaza. And I have walked in, and the smoke drifts right into the store with, if someone is smoking right outside, so.
Could that be extended to Libby Park? Because what's happening, because I just got a text from a friend of mine saying that he had just walked through Libby Park, and there's a bunch of drunks yelling at all these tourists, and you guys showed up in three minutes. But it's like they move. And so if we were to have a no smoking ordinance in the arcade, that would be a mechanism to deal with it.
Well, that's why, just to...
But it wouldn't be in...
Look at, yeah.
What the other cities have done. Because if we didn't have it, also extend to Libby Park, they'll just go over to Libby Park.
I will look at, it's really revising our definition of public place to include open public places.
Thank you. Mayor?
I want to commend Chief Kenny for the, your timely response on this and the actions you have taken and the rapport you've developed with the community. It's very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. I have good staff, too.
And I mirror that.
Yeah.
Excellent job. Any other comments? No? No? Okay. Thank you. Anybody in the audience that wants to mention, finger? Okay. We're now going to convene is the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. And there's a consent calendar that I will entertain a motion on. Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Slatt?
Yes. We're now going to adjourn back to the regular city council meeting and reports from council members. Councilmember Smith, do you have anything to report tonight?
No, there's another discussion item.
Oh, there is?
Yeah, but it's, it's at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet. Well, at the, at the end of that, we will be adjourning. At the end of that discussion item. You want to take up item 10? I'm more than willing to now.
No, you're-
Which would you prefer?
Let's hear from council members and-
Okay. No, what that says is adjourn to regular city council meeting from-
You're right.
-Redevelopment Agency. That's what you're looking at. All right. Reports of council members? Nothing from Councilwoman Smith?
Nothing.
Councilman Laura, anything to report?
No.
Councilwoman Clapp?
I went to the VCTC meeting last Friday and I spoke with the representative from Caltrans and I mentioned the trash on 33 and how bad it had gotten and how embarrassing it was. And today, when I drove to work, they were out picking up trash. So it's cool.
That's great.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Strobel?
Nothing.
No? I have a couple of things to report. One is that I went to the Veteran of Foreign Wars party. It was a Christmas-type party last night and I really appreciate the, I appreciate the invitation and the hospitality shown during that. It was a, it was a nice get-together. They had a, they had a bluegrass band that played Christmas music along with bluegrass music. And it was, to see these veterans that have sacrificed for our country was very, very heartfelt to me. It was, it was really nice. The other thing that I'll just point out is that, as you are aware, I have been our member to the Gold Coast Transit for the last year. And at the last meeting, I was elected to be the vice chair for next year.
Right.
So we're in the process of moving forward to developing the Gold Coast Transit District, which is very exciting. There's a substantial building project where we're going to be moving the actual location of the company that we're moving forward on. So I'm looking forward to serving in that role on that particular board. Mr. Clark?
I just wanted to update you on the Community Development Director recruitment. We did interview a pool of applicants last week and then I've since that time interviewed two finalists. And we're getting into the reference checking mode now. And so hopefully we'll be in a position to make an appointment before the end of the year and have someone start soon after the new year.
Great. Mr. Fletcher?
Nothing, sir.
No? Chief, anything more?
No, sir.
Okay. Who do we have out there? Suzie, do you have anything?
Nothing, sir.
Greg?
A quick thing. I know it's getting late here. Quick. One thing, you mentioned VFW and I want to mention that Ron Sheets and his group from the VFW did go out to the cemetery a week and a half ago on the weekend and they had a crew of about 20 people out there and they did a heck of a job, really going through, cleaning up debris and, and filled up one of those huge Harrison bins, I think they're 40-yard bins, with debris. And then we had to bring a second bin and fill it up with a city crew, fill the second one up as well.
That's great.
So they did a great job on that.
Thank you.
And then I want to mention also quickly, I'll just-
I haven't.
And I just wanted to quickly mention here that this week, well, going back to the capital improvement plan from last year, there was a canopy approved at Sarzati Park. And that canopy, we're depending on a CDBG grant, which we're applying for right now, that, that application's due this week and we won't find out until early in the next, next calendar year whether it's approved. We're also requesting support from the Ojai Civic Association, hoping they'll be generous to support this project like they did with the Sarzati restroom. And what we found is that there's a very nice building. We've, we've taken a, inserted a Photoshop picture here. And if you flip to the back, it's aluminum frame and we've used tongue-in-groove wood undersetting, but it's all recycled aluminum, so it qualifies for use of a fund that we have. It's an AB 939 fund, which really helps out, support the funding on this project. So because of that, it looks, depending whether these two grants come through, we may be able to do two shelters, the two that are shown in that picture. And so we reviewed that with the Planning Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission. They're supportive. And if you had any comments, appreciate hearing them off the cuff, but we were planning to, you know, apply for these grants to support this project.
Looks great.
Yeah, very nice.
Thanks.
All right. I don't see anyone else in the audience to give a, oh, Rhonda?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right. Moving on to the reorganization of the city council, item number 10. This is the time of the year when there's a nomination for the election of mayor and the mayor pro tem for 2014. And I will start things off by nominating Mayor Protem Strobel as mayor for-
Excuse me. I'd like to just correct something in the report when I was talking to Councilwoman Smith.
Mm-hmm.
In 2011, it was Carol was mayor, Betsy was mayor pro tem, Sue Horgan, Paul and Carlin. 2012, Betsy became mayor, Sue Horgan, Paul, Carlin, Smith. This is the lineup.
Mm-hmm.
In 2013, because Sue Horgan retired, that moved Paul up to become mayor, Carlin mayor pro tem, and Carol Smith should be next in line, then Betsy, then Laura. So in 2014, depending upon who's elected as mayor, mayor pro tem, it will be, then I'll say the new lineup there. And then I'd also like to say that on January 14th, we will have recognition of the outgoing mayor, as I got a phone call from Senator Woman Johanna.
Hannah Beth Jackson.
Yes. Hannah Beth Jackson, I apologize, and she would like to come, so we set that for January 14th. So now we may proceed with it.
All right. Let me just make sure I understand exactly what, what you're saying. You're saying that the order is myself currently as mayor, then Carlin Strobel, then it would go to-
Carol Smith.
Carol Smith. Councilwoman Smith, then Councilwoman Clapp, and then Councilmember Laura. And the reason for Clapp and Laura is the number of votes received in the last election.
Okay.
So Paul will move to the end of the line.
Okay.
Councilwoman Clapp received a few more votes than Councilmember Laura.
Okay.
Well, that's why I'm doing the rotation, so-
Which set the nominations is?
You let me know.
I'm, I'm looking at this resolution.
So the resolution, does it need to be changed? I will change it accordingly to the list.
Let me look at, I'm looking at the resolution and not the staff report. Okay. So the reason it would go from Mayor Protem Strobel back to Councilwoman Clapp and then to Savaro, is because of the votes?
Councilmember Smith moved to the bottom of the line when she went, was outgoing mayor.
Right.
So that was in 2012. When Betsy became mayor, Councilwoman Smith moved to the bottom. And I didn't have that in this resolution. So in 2013, when you became mayor, it's, the lineup should have been you, Carlin, Smith, Clapp and Laura.
Okay.
And I didn't put Smith in there above Clapp. I had her still at the bottom and she should accordingly moved up.
Okay. Okay. All right. So the correct order would be, if we stay consistent with the order, would be Councilwoman Smith would be the mayor pro tem.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And-
Stay with the tradition.
Okay.
For 2014, it would be Carlin, Smith, Clapp, Laura, Blatz.
All right. And then I guess the first question would be whether Councilwoman Smith wishes to be mayor pro tem.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Then I'm going to start this off by nominating Mayor Protem Carlin Strobel as mayor for 2014.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion?